... meeting, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Beck, can we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Barnes.
Here.
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Counselor Madrano.
Here.
Counselor Sampson.
Counselor Sampson is here in the back making her way down in just a second.
Counselor Walton.
Hello.
Hello, I'm Mayor Protemois.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, we have a call.
Hey, thank you so much. All right, so prior to public input, we wanted to invite a very special guest we have. We have our state representative Kyle Brown, who is here to share a couple of words in regards to Counselor Briggs and some things that the state were able, the state office was able to put together in her honor. So I'll call up Representative Kyle Brown.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it, and it's a pleasure to be with all of you today. Since it's my first time in front of you, I just want to say what an honor it is to be able to serve all of you as your state representative, and also to just let you know that I'm, my office and my door is always open. If any of you or your constituents are having issues with state government, please don't hesitate to reach out. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Kyle Brown, and I represent Lafayette and many of the surrounding communities. I wanted to just express my deepest sympathies and condolences in the loss of Councilmember Briggs. She was a friend of mine and meant a lot to me personally. She and I had had so many good chats even just recently, and I just, I joined the Lafayette community in mourning her loss. In her honor, the Colorado House of Representatives has prepared a memorial, and for the record, I just wanted to share all of that with you tonight. The House of Representatives convened in the Seventy-Fourth General Assembly hereby mourns the loss of Tanya Briggs. The Colorado House of Representatives pays tribute to the life and legacy of Tanya Briggs. As a Lafayette City Council member, she was a true public servant who fought to protect and improve the Lafayette community. Tanya worked hard to help others and assist small businesses during the challenges of the last few years. Tanya loved animals and worked on many issues regarding the protection of open spaces and the preservation of our environment. She truly was a dedicated, she truly was dedicated to preserving the Lafayette community she loved. The Colorado House of Representatives is deeply saddened by her passing and extends heartfelt condolences to her family, friends, and community. On request of Representative Kyle Brown, given this Twenty-Sixth Day of September, two thousand twenty-three, State Capitol Denver, Julie McCluskey, Speaker of the House of Representatives. No tribute or memorial that I can present or that anyone can present can fully appreciate the loss that the community has faced. And I just wanted to express again my sympathies and condolences. And I also want to say, just as a, as a member of the community who cares about mental health, that it's okay for us not to be okay, and that the state government has set up crisis helplines. It's, it's real easy. People can dial nine eight eight if you are experiencing a mental health crisis. Are you depressed and you need to talk to someone? I would encourage folks to reach out. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening and to share this with you, and I look forward to serving with you and living up to the, to the memory of, of Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you so much, Representative Brown, for that, and I know it means a lot to the, to the family as well. I know you personally hand-delivered that to our family this past weekend, and we just really appreciate you taking the time to come out here and, and talk, you know, do it publicly, but also just to let us know that you're here for us, and we value your partnership a lot. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now officially open up public comment. For those in attendance that wish to speak, please fill out a yellow form here that you can grab through the glass doors in the back. You may also call in for public comment. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do, and we will begin with Frank Archileta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the record, folks. Bear with me. I have spoken in the past about Lafayette's hostile radical history. I have spoken about Mary Miller's bank defrauding the community. I have spoken about her family involvement with the Ku Klux Klan. I have spoken about them defrauding the United Mine Workers. I have spoken about the Lafayette swimming pool in nineteen thirty-four, when the fire department put up a sign, "White Trade Only." I have spoken about the Lafayette Cemetery, about segregation to the Latinos and to the Catholics. I have spoken about the Hennings, records not being tracked and kept by the city of Lafayette at all. Now, truth, justice, and respect and remembrance. Let us not forget the Arapaho history and their tragic turbulent past and the impact it caused to them. This land in Lafayette belonged to them, and it was stolen. We honor the Miller families, the Harmon families, the Wonka families, and other families. The Arapaho's were here before anybody else, folks. Council, we must rethink everything to reset the moral compass, to start over and reshape our past as we recapture history and change it, reframing the whole context in which we understand ourselves and still audible echoes of our turbulent past. There is an awful lot that needs to be revised. The Arapaho indigenous people are not strangers or new to this country. We must reframe the public's attitudes towards the United States government's past and present treatment of the Arapaho indigenous people. Facts, the vanishing race. Since fourteen ninety-two, there were over twelve million Native Americans. According to the eighteen ninety census, there was only two hundred thousand Native Americans left, thirty-seven million buffalo killed. This was European and their descendant's agenda, policy, and plan to commit systemic genocide to the indigenous Native Americans. What a shameful event of ethnic cleansing. I ask you, can you tell me who really were the true savages? What happened to the Arapaho's fundamental civil rights? Today, the Arapaho still struggle for justice. Cultural sensitivities now. Council, if you truly believe in building an inclusive community, then it is time to include the history of the Arapaho people and to honor them. Let us make the city of Lafayette a better place to live and a city for all, a democracy for all. It is time to rename the Mary Miller Theater the Arapaho. I repeat, it is now time to rename the Mary Miller Theater the Arapaho. Give the Arapaho's the respect and dignity they deserve. As we reform a lot of our city policies, we must have more inclusive policies. I repeat, we must have more inclusive policies, not just a sign outside that anybody that drives by can't see it because of trees. That sign should be on the corner over here to show the people the intent, which is really mean. Must be also more balanced. Throughout the years, the city has not been balanced with our policies. They've been one-sided pretty much. It hasn't been that much for the minorities. The moral issue is about equal rights and social justice for the Arapaho's. Once again, folks, this land, it belonged to them according to the treaties and that. It was a tragedy what happened to them, the genocide to all these people. Twelve million people disappeared. Twelve million. There was only two hundred thousand according to that census in eighteen ninety. As we go on with our lives, it's just not about nowadays what's going on. It's about the past. We must recognize the past in order to move forward, to truly understand what happened to the minority people. I thank you for all your consideration throughout the years of my presentations. I know it's been hard, and I know a lot of people might not like the truth, but I do speak the truth to the power, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Archileta. Next, we have Denise Walker.
Good evening. So I'm Denise Walker. As some of you or maybe all of you know, I'm the Vice Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I'm also here to read and put into the record a statement in recognition and remembrance of Counselor Tanya Briggs, who is our council liaison. The Human Rights Commission sends deep condolences to the Briggs family and recognizes and honors the contributions made by Counselor Tanya Briggs to the mission of the Lafayette Human Rights Commission. Tanya worked tirelessly to advance the mission of the HRC by showing up, listening, keeping us informed, and appreciating volunteer members of the community, of the commission. Even when her opinion was in the minority, she stood firm in the support of the principles of the group, diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. She went out of her way to support and champion the work of boards and commissions, going above and beyond the typical commitment of a city council liaison. She was actively engaged with residents and found creative solutions to resolve challenges. Tanya brought deep passion, courage, kindness, and authenticity to her service to the residents of Lafayette. The Lafayette Human Rights Commission will carry on Tanya's legacy of service through our efforts to bridge connection and understanding among the Lafayette community. So thanks, and I'll just add, I will miss her deeply.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for that. Okay, I don't see any more yellow forms in front of me. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Not seeing any hands. I do have, it looks like we do have one caller in, caller with phone number ending in nine three zero. If you wish to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. If it's not star nine, then it might be star six. But we, yep, looks like we got your hand up. Great. So let's go ahead and unmute caller, phone number ending in nine three zero. And you will have five minutes. Go ahead, caller.
Hi there. Thanks so much for taking my call.
Thank you for being here.
For your work. I just wanted to call from near Long Lake.
I wanted to just raise the flag with the unfortunate passing of Councilmember Briggs in terms of our participation in Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, the Metro Airport.
And Tanya was a tireless advocate for us, and if the call is left in many ways, but we know also that it's left in that way. So I did want to just bring it to the attention of councilmembers there, that that is something that's
on the TV lines and what's happening to get the feedback on what the progress might be for that in the future. We did recently have input from the consultants at the airport that they're looking at a scenario in which they're routing most of the outgoing flights of five flights from Long Lake to the Indian Peaks area, and that will just continue to kind of intensify the fear about planes that were disappearing every day already to the tune of several hundred and hundreds of thousands every year. So I'm hoping to bring that to your attention as well. I do appreciate taking the time to, we like technology as well, being on the industrial land of the Arapaho here in Long Lake. So thank you so much. Appreciate the chance to get it up.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then do you mind quickly stating your name again, so we have it for the record?
Of course, Heather Hanson.
Sorry, one more time, please.
Heather Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. IT manager tonight, as it all looks like. All right, thank you. It looks like that's all, all the callers we have in, for public comments, and I don't see any more in person, so we will close public comments and move forward with our consent agenda. On the agenda, on the consent agenda, we have item A, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting minutes. Item B, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, city council special meeting minutes. Item C, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, city council workshop summary. Item D, first reading of ordinance eighteen, series twenty twenty-three, vacation of utility easement, Cole Park subdivision. Item E, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven, disposition of surplus equipment. Item F, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight, minor subdivision plat and acceptance of property interest dedicated for the minor plat, Carbone subdivision, fourth filing replat. A, and item G, consideration of a motion to amend the professional services agreement with DBA Water Consultancy pertaining to water resources engineering services. What is the council's pleasure? Any items?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are on to presentations. We have our guest, our guest county commissioner, Martha Loachiume, here to discuss some Boulder County ballot items. We've gotten a little bit of a background on these, the rule of these, of some taxes here that she's here to present us on, and then hoping to get some, either some support or, or a response or feedback from council. So I'll turn it over to our county commissioner.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. And I just want to add, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Boulder County, our condolences as well for the loss of your colleague, Councilmember Briggs. So I just want to state that before I get started. And just want to appreciate the time. We are, I'm here to talk about three different ballot measures. The key here for Boulder County voters is that there are no new taxes. These are all tax extensions. The first one I'm going to talk about just very briefly, that I don't have a slide for because it's specific to Netherlands. But in case there are folks who know people in Netherlands and just want to answer questions, and certainly for our elected officials to be able to respond. One, the one piece that's Netherlands voters only is specifically regarding the EcoPass and would just be an extension of that particular tax that right now allows Netherlands residents to participate. The change in that tax measure this year would give businesses and business owners in Netherlands the opportunity to opt in if they should choose, and they would do that collectively. We think that could only be positive. So that's what that measure is about. For the rest of us in Boulder County, as far as what we'll see on the November seventh ballot, and hopefully before, because they'll get mailed out starting around October sixteenth. The first one is County One A, Open Space Tax Extension. And Commissioner Ashley Stolzmann is the lead on this, so if folks have specific questions, that's where you'll, you'll want to go. This is an extension of a point zero five percent sales tax. And this map in here gives folks just a visual, and you can't see all the details, but just visually, it gives you a really idea. Very dark green is County Open Space. The limey screen is County Conservation Easement, which means there's a whole lot of very specific conservation easements that work in different ways. And then Joint County-City Open Space is the brighter green, light green. Just to give people an idea, and I share this map because when we talk about open space, this will give you an idea of what we have, and really it's around that piece of how do we address world boundaries. You can see in here that there are some properties that haven't been purchased yet, and they would create contiguous open space lands. We at Boulder County are the largest landowner of open space and property. The preserves you can see on the screen, we're really looking at a few different pieces. One of them is wildlife habitat. There's passive recreation that happens on our open space. We also have a significant ag program, and that's about twenty-five thousand acres of agricultural land, and we work with tenants on those properties. We will continue to acquire open space for the uses of urban buffers and then, of course, seen in quarters. So anybody who lives around this region and area, I hope, has gotten an opportunity to go out on open space. I shared this with folks publicly. Before I got into this job, I had never been on Boulder County Open Space. I think it's really important for us to remember and to encourage and to look at the opportunities for all members of our community. And so I am a proponent of continuing the acquisition, but also the maintenance that's included in this particular tax extension. Maintenance, maintenance needs, when I talked about, we are the largest landowner, we're talking about one hundred and sixteen thousand acres, and they're divvied up in those different buckets of just agriculture, also forest lands, and then the conservation easements that I already talked about. On Sunday, I got the opportunity to go to the Parks and Open Space Volunteer Picnic. Again, this year, this year, we had eight hundred and nineteen volunteers that threw all of their hours, and many, many hours, it actually equates to eight full-time employees of all the folks that donate their time to this open space program. And I share that because it's significant. There's also about a hundred and twenty miles of trails, but again, I would encourage folks to get on the bouldercounty.gov website if you haven't gone out, and take an opportunity to focus on mental health, to focus some time with your friends, your colleagues, or your family, and, and get out there on those trails. We also have three hundred and fifty historic structures that are also, that are maintained, and the volunteers I already talked about. So we'll all go through both of the measures. I want to open it up for questions, and then we'll be asking for support and endorsement in different ways. So the second one that folks will see, Boulder County residents, will see County One B, which is titled Affordable Housing. I'm the lead on that particular one, and I just say that so if you have questions or you want to volunteer, or you want to go sit at Farmer's Market or any of those great things, as we continue to educate folks. You can let me know, and/or Anne Reid Jensen with Echo is working as a campaign chair. So this particular ballot measure is also an existing point one eight five percent tax. The history behind this tax is that in two thousand and fourteen, the commissioners at that time went to Boulder County voters and asked for flood recovery funding. That's how this tax came to Boulder County voters initially. It was a five-year tax at that time. And so in two thousand and eighteen, the commissioners at that time went back to Boulder County voters and asked for funding specific to the alternative sentencing facility. That was also a five-year tax. And so now, because this tax also will expire in two thousand and twenty-four, and we just did the groundbreaking about three months ago on the alternative sentence facility. We have funding through two thousand and twenty-four, and we'll get to the capital costs that were intended in that use. So now we're going to Boulder County voters with the same tax, no financial difference here, asking voters, could we together create the first sustainable funding source for affordable housing and attainable housing? And this is my life's passion and what I have been doing in my previous life. I don't believe there's anybody, this is just a snapshot. I can't imagine there's anybody on the dais and/or even public that would argue about the housing crisis that we have in Boulder County or the state of Colorado, quite frankly, the, the country. This is just a little bit of the data in regards to the high cost of housing. This is just a little bit of the data in regards to the high cost of housing, not to disregard the inflation costs and the gasoline prices and all the different pieces, including childcare that we see in our self-sufficiency studies from our partners. The other piece in this data that's really important is right now, about 65% of Boulder County workers are driving in, as individuals, in cars to get to work in Boulder County. So, we have a housing crisis, we have a cost issue, we also have a climate issue on our hands. And we have continually, historically and also in the last three years, been going out in public opinion polling and asking residents, what are the issues that are most, you know, on top of mind, your biggest concern? Housing continues to be, and affordability of housing continues to be the first response. And so, for us as commissioners, it was really a conversation of what is, what can we do? What's our role? What's the part that we can help play? Because as we all know, and you saw it in the map, we'll continue to really focus on housing from a building and development standpoint with our partners, you all, as municipalities, towns, and cities throughout the region. This particular information is brought from the acronym that's under the orange piece there is RHP, which is Regional Housing Partnership. And some of you all may have been involved in it and are know folks who have. This study was done in 2018, and what this was showing at that time, there were 7,400 affordable housing units. And the Regional Housing Partnership, who are the folks really that are representing all of our communities, focusing on inclusionary housing, focusing on different solutions of how we address this housing crisis that is not new, but has been exasperated. At that time, they were estimating a need financially of $25 million annually to be able to get to the 2035 goal that they had for affordable housing units around the county. And so, the website that's on there, YesOn1B, is where folks can go to get more information specific to the 1B measure. And here's the, here's what everybody's waiting for. How's that money going to be used? Where, what are we going to do with it? Because the open space was just acquisition and maintenance, and this particular funding source will be used for, not in priority order, I just happen to like numbers versus bullet points, but I'm talking on slides. Development is everything you're thinking about, just regular costs. If you think about the Willoughby Corner process, for example, the entitlements, the zoning, all of the actual construction pieces, this could be rehabilitation, it could be retrofit, when we talk about true development costs. The second one that's on here is affordable housing. What I want to do is define two pieces for you that are part of the ballot resolution language that you can find on the bouldercounty.gov website. One is affordable housing, and when we're talking about affordable housing, we're looking at the goal of folks spending less than 30% of their income in their housing, whether it's rent or it's a mortgage payment. And that would be at around the 80% area of median income. That's affordable housing for the definition that we're using in this particular ballot measure. The other piece that is included is attainable housing. And that number, we still want people to be under 30% of their income, but that number would be between the 80 and 120% AMI. Affordable housing in this site is talking about rentals, also including homeownership. It's talking about our mobile home parks and the resident-owned communities. How do we create those opportunities? The last one that's included in the funding, and again, included in the ballot resolution language for people that want to take a look, is housing support services. What people don't, may not know is that at the county, through our partnerships with that separate entity that is Public Health, our Department of Community Services and our Department of Housing and Human Services, we do a lot of different housing support services right now. That looks like a homeownership counseling, it looks like mediation for landlords and tenants, it looks like mediation services and eviction prevention. It has looked like a grant that we worked on earlier today that has to do with services to support folks who are on the brink of homelessness or who have, are coming out of the experience of homelessness. So, those are the three different areas that we did not, in the ballot resolution language, make a decision on what percent. Some of our taxes are set up that way, for example, sustainability tax. This one was not, because we are continuing, and I'm continuing to go out and outreach and hear questions, talk with folks, and we're compiling all of that. My guess at this point is that from an allocation standpoint, once this passes on November 7, that we will meet with our Regional Housing Partnership and really give them the lead in regards to how do we allocate that, what's the criteria, how do we make sure that folks have an opportunity geographically, et cetera, to use this funding? So, that's my, the quickest version of this presentation I can do for all three of the ballot measures. If folks have questions, they can reach out to me on 1B, and again, Commissioner Stolzmann on 1A, which is the open space. I'm here for questions, I'll do my best to answer, and I also am asking for either endorsement and/or other cities and towns are doing resolutions of support. And so, that gives you an opportunity, a press release, or however else you want to share the information, your residents. Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, thank you so much for joining us this evening and for that presentation. So, we'll open it up to council for questions, for either ballot initiative. Counselor Walton.
Hi, Marta, thank you for being here tonight, for joining us and for the presentation, and thank you for being flexible, coming back or rescheduling. I was wondering, you may have said this, and I missed it if you did, what amount of money annually is it expected that this portion of the sales tax for 1B would raise?
Thank you, I missed that. So, we're estimating for 2023, and again, this, this tax measure, as it is right now, will expire in 2024, so we have this funding that's happening. So, estimated revenue in 2023 is $17.4 million for what will then be allocated, hopefully, on 1B.
Lafayette, as you know, was an early adopter of the, actually, this might have been before your term started, but anyway, we were an early adopter of the 12% regional goal. We supported the housing summit and the, have been, had, had and have had and are growing our tools for helping with workforce, attainable, affordable housing, whatever kind of bucket you want to put that in. And so, we, you know, are really proud of where we are in, in getting to that goal of 12% deed restricted. There's still a ways to go, but we feel like we're ahead of other areas in the county. There also, in the past, has, I've heard anecdotally, you know, people saying that Lafayette has been an affordable area for Boulder County. And, and so, we, we feel like we're really doing our part. We appreciate, you know, where we are on the Phase 1A and 1B for Willoughby Corner with the support of the county, but we are really putting in a lot of money, you know, on, when you look at other projects around the state, our community's already putting in a lot of money. So, tell us a little bit about why Lafayette residents should support this tax measure in, continuing this tax for affordable housing in addition to what we're doing already. How will something like this continue to benefit so that we can get to our 12% here in our city?
I appreciate that. So, two pieces that the Willoughby Corner, just one, one project that the partnership with Boulder County Housing Authority, $12.8 million came to that project through ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act. And I know you all put in ARPA funding as well. What I'm helping people understand is that that funding would not have existed without the COVID relief funding, and we do not currently have a sustainable funding source. So, for any city or town who comes to any of the housing authorities and says, okay, we think we have somebody who wants to donate land, and we think we want a land bank, or we want a, whatever the different processes are, the county's never going to go to anybody and say, you have to do affordable housing here, and it's going to look like this, et cetera. All of our municipal and town partners have come to us and said, okay, we've got these ideas, whether it was Kestrel, or whether it was Netherlands and Tungson Village, or projects that are happening up in Lyons as other examples. When you come to us and say, okay, we need this type of affordable housing, whether it's, like you said, workforce housing or transitional housing, whatever it is, we want to be able to respond. We want to be able to give seed money, we want to be able to give some unencumbered funds, we want to be able to address all the different issues that happen with other pieces of federal funding. We have, I believe, a really strong opportunity right now in Colorado with Proposition 123 and some of the other focuses that the governor has, I do believe, in response to what didn't happen with Senate Bill 213 last session, potentially three different bills that are going to come forward this session legislatively, that are going to provide some opportunities. And so, if we can support all of you as town councils, elected officials, and also residents to come up with the solutions for each community based on y'all's needs, then we'll be able to respond and say, okay, here we go, how can we help?
And so, the funding for, that would be available through this tax would not be available until 20, until starting 2024 or 2025?
2025.
And 17 million isn't going to go very far. It'll go quickly, right? I mean, there's a lot of, hopefully, there's a lot of projects that people will be getting, getting going, especially if communities in this area are opting into 123. So, is, will, would there be funding that, would this funding be able to help with those kinds of projects as well?
With which kind of proj?
Well, any, any projects that come as an initiative from opting in to 123?
Yes, absolutely.
There's no restriction that you know of or anything? I haven't heard that there would be, so.
Well, and the way I understand is that, I mean, nobody right now, I believe, I think it's safe to say, there's not a town or a city that right now could just build their own affordable project on their own, themselves, as their only funding source. Spoke at Kaufman is a good example, there was more than eight sources of funding, right? So, if we can help and somebody can leverage Prop 123, and then we can be a portion of that funding source, then that's how we would be able to respond.
Okay. The, I know that the county, the county isn't necessarily, I guess, is it safe to say, I've heard, I've heard a county commissioner say this, does the county really rely heavily on the municipalities to do the heavy lifting, I guess, when it comes to meeting the affordable housing goals? I mean, is there any land banking that the county's doing in unincorporated areas or land use areas where the county has for affordable housing or would consider that in the future? Or are you really needing to rely on the municipalities for the heavy lift?
In general, just based on the comprehensive plan that we have and the planning areas that each of our towns and cities have and the growth boundaries that exist, in general, there isn't land that's designated for housing development that's in an incorporated Boulder County. And because the infrastructure doesn't exist, the water, the, all the different pieces that in cities and towns, just in general, I believe the state is also moving towards, where we've been talking about around transit-oriented development, that's not in unincorporated Boulder County. So, all of the different infrastructure tends to be in the cities and towns, and the opportunities of infill or retrofit or rehabilitation, we believe exist in the cities and towns, which is why we're, another reason why we're supporting y'all to be able to do the projects that are going to meet needs and be accessible to residents from each town or city.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm excited about Willoughby starting and breaking ground, and really appreciate the county's involvement in supporting that from just, from, you know, the financial piece of it, but just also, you know, the heavy lift that kind of through COVID to get that over the finish line too. So, thank you for that. And I think that, you know, as I am departing on City Council, I'm challenging this council to say like, okay, we've got that big project going, there's another phase that we'll be talking about, hope the county will be there too, to support those future phases, but it's kind of like, okay, what's the next project? So, it's interesting to me to know, and if anybody doesn't have this already on your calendar, there's a housing summit right after the election, so you'll know the results of, I guess, of this tax initiative, and, and I'm sure, and I'm glad, I'm glad that is being organized to get back, to get all of the communities back together and kind of re-up that dedicated 12% goal, kind of find out what the updated numbers are, and then kind of see where the, where the different projects might be, where the different communities are and where the priorities are. So, I'll be there in spirit with you.
Thank you.
I'll still be on council, so maybe I'll, I'll still show up, but.
Thank you. And that housing summit, depending on which one you're looking at on your calendar, may be rescheduled to January. I'm just going to throw that out there.
Okay.
Keep posted. And I share your enthusiasm, and I appreciate, Lafayette was a significant partner in Willoughby Corner too, so I just want to say that.
All right, questions from other members of council? Questions or comments? Okay, well, then, I think we, you're looking for ways to support. Counselor Simpson?
I was waiting for you to say comments. I'm ready for a comment.
Sure, comments, go ahead, Counselor.
I would like to request that the Lafayette City Council support extending 1B.
All right, so I guess we can kind of get into this discussion now. So, what have you seen in other cities, resolutions, any other ways of support?
What can we do? Can we do a resolution?
You absolutely can, council, yes.
And have you seen anything else from our neighboring communities?
Personal endorsements and otherwise resolutions. I was in Town Alliance last night, and they've, they've asked for the resolutions to be able to build their own. City of Longmont, I was there last week, and they, it sounded like after some hours later, they went back to the, do we endorse right now, how do we do it? So, I've sent everything over for them, I believe they're addressing it tonight.
Great. So, is, is council okay with directing staff to put that resolution together in support of 1B for our next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Looks like we have unanimous support on that one.
Great.
And then, we also have 1A as well. Sorry, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. So, Initiative 1A is for the open space tax renewal. How do, how does council feel on that one? What are thoughts?
I didn't hear a request necessarily for, were you asking for resolutions on 1A?
Resolutions, both is welcome.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Do we have a general consensus, general support for that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, looks like we can prepare both of those resolutions for our next meeting, and then have any other discussion if needed then, but that's all we have on our end. Do you need anything else from us or any other direction?
Just, do I, should I send those resolutions that we used over to staff? Would that be helpful? Okay, okay, thank you. I can do that, and I just want to appreciate all of your time and interest as well, so that we can educate voters, so people know what it's about, and then they can make their own educated decision and use their ballot on November 7. So, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for joining us this evening, and I know you're working hard on these and visiting all our neighboring cities as well, so we really appreciate all the work the county's putting in as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are on to proclamations. We have two for October. We have, starting with item I, this is Energy Efficiency Day for October 4, 2023, aka today. Does, anyone want to read this one in?
I do.
Counselor Barnes, go ahead.
Of course, right. It's, uh, 51. Energy Efficiency Day, October 4, 2023. Whereas the City of Lafayette strives to be a leader in sustainability and set a goal to achieve annual community-wide energy savings through energy efficiency measures that would lower building utility costs, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and promote healthier and safer buildings. And whereas smarter energy use reduces the amount of energy we need to power our lives, which helps avoid emissions that can harm our health and pollute our air. And whereas implementing energy efficiency and other clean energy policies and programs helps boost economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move towards a sustainable and resilient future. And whereas energy efficiency is the most cost-effective, quickest, quickest and cleanest way to meet our current and future energy needs. And whereas cutting energy waste saves consumers billions of dollars on their utility bills annually, up to $500 per household from appliance efficiency standards alone. Whereas residents of Lafayette can continue to contribute to our energy efficiency goals by learning about and participating in our energy efficiency programs and practice smarter energy use in their daily lives. And whereas residents are encouraged to attend EcoTober Fest on October 7, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the Louisville Community Park, learn from various partners on the benefits of energy efficiency and receive resources such as efficient, efficient light bulbs. And whereas the City of Lafayette gladly supports the ongoing work of our Sustainability Division and the Sustainability and Resilience Advisory Committee. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the City of Lafayette, Colorado, do hereby declare October 4, 2023 as an Energy Efficiency Day. We encourage all residents, visitors, and staff to support and recognize the need to prioritize the energy efficient habits, which, whether switching out old light bulbs for efficient LEDs or upgrading to efficient equipment, small steps can lead to big efficient LEDs or upgrading to efficient equipment, small steps can lead to big reductions in energy, energy usage, utility bills, and emissions. So moved. So moved.
Great, thank you so much, Councilor Barnes, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor, I would just like to say that our Sustainability Department is leading a great deal of efforts across the county to leading and engaging with our other partners around the county to move forward to a more resilient community, and Eco-tober Fest is one of those really, really innovative, creative events, and if you're curious about sustainability, resilience, and what that looks like, I think we have like seven, over seventy different ways to learn about what, how you can live a more sustainable life, and what that really means in resilience, and I'll be there in a booth as well. So, come see me.
All right, thank you, Councilor Barnes. Okay, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that proclamation passes unanimously. We are on to our next proclamation, this is for Indigenous Peoples' Day for October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Who would like to read this one in? Mayor Pro Tim?
Let me do it. Indigenous Peoples' Day, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of the Native Nations to the United Nations International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the city council of the City of Lafayette recognizes that indigenous peoples have lived and flourished in the Americas since time immemorial, and whereas Colorado encompasses the ancestral homelands of forty-eight tribes and the Denver metropolitan area is home to descendants of approximately one hundred tribal nations, and whereas the city count, or the council of the City of Lafayette recognizes and values the vast contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, science, philosophy, arts, and culture, and whereas indigenous peoples in our communities, as in all parts of Americas, endured centuries of cruelty, exploitation, and genocide, and whereas the City of Lafayette fosters inclusivity, racial equity, and justice for all people and opposes systemic practices that perpetuate the oppression of indigenous peoples, and whereas the City of Lafayette recognizes its shared responsibility to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, traditions, and cultural contributions, now there be resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Lafayette formally recognize the interconnectedness of humanity and foundational and cultural contributions of indigenous people to history of our community, and do hereby proclaim the twelfth day of October of each year as Indigenous Peoples' Day, the City of Lafayette will support events that celebrate and honor indigenous peoples, their traditions, culture, and our shared history. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that proclamation passes unanimously as well. We are moving on now to regular business. These, we will begin with item K, items pertaining to the city council, so the City of Lafayette twenty twenty-four budget, this includes a public hearing for Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine, adopting the twenty twenty-four budget and establishing the mill levy, and two, first reading of ordinance number nineteen, series twenty twenty-three, a twenty twenty-four budget appropriation. So I will turn it over to our interim city administrator, it's Doling here to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, tonight it'll be another joint presentation by myself, Chief Official Financial Officer Devon Billingsley and our Public Works Director Jeff Arthur. So similar to our workshop, this agenda is going to be structured, talking a little bit about philosophy and strategy, then going into some revenue and budget overviews, some budget outcomes broken out by general fund and our dedicated funds, a little deeper dive into water rates specifically for discussion, and then the steps, your public hearing and the two council motions that you just discussed. So, as we've been saying the last few years, the municipal charter lays out how our budget kind of process works and responsibilities, so as the interim city administrator, it's my responsibility, along with department directors' assistance, to prepare and submit to you the budget that was provided to you on September twentieth. You then adopt the budget, any budget adjustments throughout the year in the mill levy, including our five different special districts that will be heard at next meeting's budget, and then you also adopt any fees, like utility rates, but also things related to recreation and license and development, which will be discussed in a little bit more depth later on. So from a philosophy standpoint, it's really important that the municipal budget reflects our council priorities and community values, but also that it ensures legal compliance. And so what this means is that the budget is balanced, meaning that revenues equal expenditures, we have adequate reserves, rainy day fund, savings accounts, whatever you want to call it, for any source of emergencies, and that we also use those reserves for one-time capital expenses largely, and not ongoing revenues. And then we really try to be flexible and forward-thinking. We do this by looking first at the economic factors, which Director Billingsley will talk about, and then we focus in on how are those economic factors in our strategic outcomes helping inform our department and work plans that are developed at the beginning of each year. So here we are in the process, the home stretch of this long budget process, and we are here for your public hearing, and then in two weeks, we'll be bringing forward the budget for adoption no later than the last Thursday in October, which is outlined in the chart. So, big picture, the recommended budget's one hundred and thirty-four point five million dollars, it's thirty-four percent increase over the twenty twenty-three budget, but over half of this is attributed to debt and to issue in the water fund, and then the absence of the debt finance capital, the twenty twenty-four budget is a seven percent increase over the operating. Um, you can see here too, if you recall, last year, this chart looked a lot different, again, that debt issuance in the water fund makes the proportionality between funds much larger, typically the general fund is over half of kind of your overall operating budget, again, the general fund's sort of the workforce for the city, it funds all sorts of things, and then you have other ancillary funds. Looking at it a little bit differently, for here, capital outlay, again, for those large water projects and some general transportation projects, is thirty-five percent of the budget, this was only eleven percent last year, so again, these charts can vary differently, depending on kind of what type of priorities in years you're in, especially when it relates to large debt financing and capital projects. If you look at kind of taking out that capital outlay, our operating and our salaries and benefits are largely the same from what they were in the last prior year. And again, salaries and benefits in a typical year make up much more of that pie chart, so I wanted to dive in a little bit into salaries and benefits. So, as we've been saying over the last couple of years, we've been making really great strides in modernizing our classification and compensation systems and philosophies, and we hired a consultant last year to engage in this work, and we are coming, wrapping it up here shortly, but we anticipate that, we know that we're going to be out of the market for a lot of our positions, and so we are reserving some money set aside in this budget to start building up capacity to implement those findings from the recommendation. We're also going to be doing for our general employees outside of the classification and compensation system, a combination of both market and merit-based increases, so to the tune of about four and a half percent, two percent for just kind of the market, some call it COLA, some call it cost of living inflation, and then a merit-based program as well. And then, as you know, we have our FIRE collective bargaining agreement, and their salary increase for next year is four percent based upon that three-year contract. Again, one of the things that we tout to all of our employees, and we recently did a survey of kind of how they feel about our salaries and benefits, is this hundred percent healthcare paid dental vision and health, it's a huge benefit to our employees, and when we talk about salaries, we also want to talk about benefits, because they are a cost or a savings, depending on how the city funds it, so we are a very rare instance of having a very good healthcare plan that's a hundred percent funded for our employees. And I will turn it over to Director Billingsley to talk about kind of how the revenue fits, and then we'll go over to specific requests.
Good evening, council. So as, as interim administrator Doling described, we are, are recommending that, that we spend one hundred and thirty-four point, point five million dollars in twenty twenty-four, and, and those expenditures will be supported with what we project to be one hundred and forty-seven point one million dollars. As administrator Doling described, twenty twenty-four is expected to be a bit of an, an unusual year for us, that, that is due to a, an anticipated large issuance in the water fund, and that, that issuance both affects, obviously, our, our expenditures as we get, gets, gets started on some large capital projects, but, but also our, our revenues. So the, the large green piece of the pie is not something that, that you generally see each fiscal year. Now, we are very fortunate in, in Lafayette to have a, a broad and, and diverse avenue base. With that being said, there are a few sources of avenue that we do tend to, to focus on more so than others, and that is our, our sales and use tax, as well as our property tax. Now, in a, in a typical year, the combination of our sales and use tax and our, our property tax will total more than, than fifty percent of our total avenues, but as you can see here, in twenty twenty-four, they will total just under one-third. And the, the majority of our, our sales and use tax and our property tax is, is funneled through the general fund to, to pay for the majority of our general governmental services. So, speaking of the general fund, what you see here is, is a, a bit of a, a deeper dive into the, the revenues that we have projected for twenty twenty-four to support the forty-nine point eight million dollars in budgeted expenditures. And there are, there are two main sources of revenues, or two main sources of, of categories of, of revenues to support that, we have both ongoing as well as one time, and one time is, is sourced generally from our, our, our fund balance, which in, which at the end of twenty twenty-three, beginning of twenty twenty-four, within the general fund is projected to be thirty point eight million dollars, please do note that, that, that number includes our, our emergency reserves of, of twenty-five percent of our operating expenditures as, as well as all of our both committed and restricted balances. So then, then shifting over to the ongoing revenue component of forty-six point one million dollars, there are a few things that are going on in, in that number. So, first and foremost, as, as we discussed at the workshop on August twenty-eighth, what we have been seeing for the last couple of, of months is some, some slowdown in our sales and use tax. In January of this year, year over year, we were up about eight percent, in, in both July and in August of this year, we were actually down by around two percent, so year to date, we are still up, we're still up one point seven eight percent, but you can see the trend is going in the, in a, not in a positive direction. This is something that we did see starting to, to form when we first did our, our budget projections earlier this year, and so that has been factored in. We are also seeing a, a stabilization, albeit at a, a depressed level for our building and development, our avenues, so as- Um, so as, uh, far back as twenty twenty, um, annually, we were bringing in amount three point three million dollars, um, or three point two million dollars. That has since fallen to about two million dollars, so we're down about a third. Um, those, the, that year, both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were exceptionally strong and we generally see, uh, a historical average of around, uh, a two million dollars per year. And so that's what we have, uh, uh, built into the budget for tw- twenty twenty-four. Um, the one, um, uh, overlining, if you will, uh, is, uh, per property tax. Um, as we all know, um, uh, market values and assessed, uh, values are up, uh, uh, significantly over when the assessments were, uh, last, uh, completed two years ago. Um, however, there is, um, there is, uh, ending, uh, that is, um, uh, set to come before voters in November. That could serve to, to, uh, to, uh, temper the increase in our revenues that, um, we, we, um, we would, uh, receive. And, um, one thing important to note is we did not get our revised, uh, preliminary, uh, assessment from the county until September the twentieth, which is, uh, fairly late. Um, and we will not get, um, the, uh, the final until, uh, uh, December, the, uh, the tenth or if, uh, if, uh, position, uh, H H, uh, passes, we won't get it until, uh, January. So we actually won't know what our, um, our per property tax, uh, avenue will be for at least another few months. Um, but we had to make an educated guess and we did do that. And so we are, um, at least, uh, as far as the, uh, the budget is concerned, um, we are, uh, forecasting a conservative, uh, twelve percent in, in increase. Uh, additionally, one thing that we did this year is, um, is we knew that our, uh, our, uh, revenues were, uh, were slowing and the, uh, the requests were, uh, were many. So we, um, we, uh, tasked, uh, staff with, uh, getting creative and, um, trying to find some, uh, additional ongoing, uh, revenue and, uh, cost recovery, uh, forces. And we, um, we, uh, 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 determine that the, uh, the three most impactful are, uh, uh, credit card cost, uh, recovery. Um, we are one of, um, uh, the few, uh, communities in our, uh, our peer group that, um, does not, um, uh, uh, pass along, uh, the, uh, the transaction, uh, fees that, uh, we incur when, um, when a, uh, customer uses a credit card. So we are, uh, mean that we do, uh, uh, start to, to, uh, pass along those, uh, fees in the, uh, form of a, uh, a maintenance charge. Uh, the second item is, uh, cost allocation. And what that is, is, um, you can think of the, uh, the general general fund as the, uh, provider of a lot of overhead services for, uh, uh, both the dedicated and enterprise, uh, uh, funds and that, that overhead is much things as HR, IT, um, uh, and so forth. Um, we had, um, done a cost allocation plan in, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, and when we did that, that's when we really determined on a much more, uh, granular, granular, uh, what the, um, the, uh, cost, uh, structure of our, uh, uh, internal services are and how to, uh, uh, properly and, uh, and, um, adequately, um, uh, pass that on to, um, both our dedicated funds and our enterprise funds. Um, we have been easing that change in over the last few years. What we did, um, for the twenty twenty-four budget is we accelerated that. Um, so this will be the last year of the, uh, the phase in and that will, um, uh, uh, generate additional, uh, revenues for the, uh, general, uh, uh, fund. And the last item is a, uh, a citywide, uh, uh, fee and analysis that we are, are, um, uh, currently undergoing. Um, we have, uh, divided this into, uh, two phases. The, uh, the first, uh, uh, phase is a, a small handful of, uh, in planning and building that we think we can, uh, implement, uh, immediately. So those fees would start on January first. And then phase two is a more, uh, comprehensive, uh, uh, analysis of all of our fees. Um, and we, and what, what we would like to do is to, um, uh, tie that with, uh, both our, our land use, uh, code update as, uh, well as the, uh, implementation of a, uh, new permitting, uh, software that, that we expect to happen, um, in the first half of twenty twenty-four. Um, these, these are the, uh, the specific, uh, announce that these, uh, these efforts should, uh, should generate for the general fund. So we have, uh, uh, five hundred and, uh, and ten thousand dollars from, uh, credit card cost, uh, recovery, uh, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from cost allocation and then, uh, uh, one hundred and, uh, sixty thousand from those, uh, uh, handful of, uh, building and development fees that, um, we would, uh, like to, uh, implement on January first. Um, and with that, um, I will, uh, turn it over to you, um, and, um, give you a chance to, um, ask any, uh, cool questions that you might have on the twenty twenty-four, uh, budget and revenue overview.
All right. Well, yeah, thank you so much, uh, for that presentation. So, uh, just so counseling those, uh, we do have more to the presentations, uh, specifically under the general fund request. So these questions will just be for what was already presented, uh, just before us right now, uh, for the budget overview. Any questions from council? Uh, Council of Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the stabilization, which, uh, that makes me happy. It's something stabilizing. Um, and I think that's the, you said that was the building and development, building, the rate of building and development. And once we, once that kind of stabilizes, is it, it's possible to maintain? Is there, can we influence the maintenance of that or is it something that we're just kind of?
Um, we really can't, um, uh, influence it, uh, per se. Um, I think more than anything, um, uh, uh, activity in the, uh, the, uh, construction and or the, the, uh, broader, uh, development, uh, community is, um, uh, influenced by interest rates. Um, and because we've seen such a rapid increase in the last, let's call it eighteen months, um, that's put a lot of, uh, projects on hold because they had done their, uh, their, uh, pro formas, um, uh, in anticipating that they would be able to get, uh, construction financing in the three and a half to four and a half percent range. Now it's like six and a half to nine and a half percent range. Um, and so I think a lot of, um, of the, uh, development, uh, community did put like the brakes on. Um, but you know, I, I, I think as, as the economy, uh, at, at large, both, uh, both nationwide and, uh, here in Lafayette gets used to a, um, a, a higher interest rate, uh, environment with construction costs now starting to tick down a little bit. Um, the expectation is things will start to pick back up, but probably, probably not what we saw in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
So the policy that we have, policies that we discuss about growth management and, uh, land use, they're not necessarily immediately influential?
Um, not, I'd say those influence over the long run. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Any other questions on this portion of the presentation? All right. Uh, well, we can go ahead and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, um, so we've gone over these general fund requests. At the workshop, we got, um, some questions and have responded in attachment A. So happy to answer those publicly, but also have those available in our packet. And, um, again, these aren't all of the general fund requests, but in your budget, um, book, it has the whole thing. And again, we're prepared to answer questions on any one of those items not specifically listed out. Um, so wanting to talk, kind of separating out the general fund requests into, um, enhancements of existing programs or services and then sort of our new ones. So when we start with some enhancements, the first thing that we're looking at is within our sustainability department. Currently, we have a part-time sustainability specialist that has been difficult to recruit and retain for. And also, um, with our climate action plan coming forward and all of the increased programs and services and expectations of our community, we would like to increase this from part-time to full-time. Um, you know, Director Zorid is, one of her, um, wonderful things that she does in addition to all the programs is also grant, um, applications. And so this year alone, she brought in over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and has three hundred and fifty-five dollars of grants on her radar next year. So having somebody that could focus on more of the technical grant writing piece and free her up to do more of the programmatic long-term vision would be really helpful and sustainable. Um, also, we piloted the e-bike rebate program last year. We're asking to convert this to ongoing. Uh, we prioritized low-income rebates to family and community members and we had over a hundred applications and were able to provide twenty-seven rebates with the funding that we had. Um, in addition to this year, based upon staffing challenges within the arts and cultural resources department, um, we piloted having a part-time event coordinator. So this is somebody that would work, um, specifically this year on the Art Night Out program, providing some substantial relief for the director to not have to spend a lot of time on that programming, but can really work with the volunteers and keep that, um, beloved programming thriving. Uh, this year, we're asking to continue this. Um, it would be year-round, but this is considered an intermittent position in that it wouldn't be twenty hours every week. They would flex their time depending on kind of what, um, programs that we have going on. They could assist with not only Art Night Out, but, um, our other programs and citywide events that we do in the library. We don't really have any dedicated event specialists within the city. Others, um, have them more as other duties as assigned. And so coordinating these events so that there's similar expectations, um, would be really helpful. They could also work with the MLK March, Pride on the Plaza, Cesar Chavez Day, Juneteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Day, which they're having some events coming up here shortly. So more to come on that. Um, and then also there was a question asked, um, kind of more specifically funding the cultural caravan and wanted to clarify in the second bullet that it's more increasing our cultural programming. So we piloted with cultural caravan this past year, but there are several other organizations that could enhance some of our cultural outreach and so, um, asking for funding for that. And again, increasing our fire marshal from part-time to full-time with some of our large projects that we have coming up and new code adoptions. Um, having this resource available kind of every day of the week, we have found, um, would greatly benefit our customer service relations with the development community and also allow, um, processes not to be, um, slowed down because of timing of staffing for review. Um, so I'm shifting to new programs, uh, really excited to kind of focus on, um, our digitization of history, but also our history telling. And so, um, the program here is working with collecting oral histories. Um, it's a continuation of a program that started decades ago in the nineteen seventies, but it's going to be modeled after the KARA LGBTQ History Project, which developed the method and it's intentionally broadening the stories of un- underrepresented, um, in the existing record, uh, collecting and preserving oral histories and archiving it and making it, um, available to the public. It's also a support from the Lafayette Historical Society, uh, which received two grants in conjunction with this, uh, work. And so we would work in partnership with them. Uh, the second piece is investment in our, um, history, specifically focusing on, um, the digital archive platform of, um, oral histories and photographs, but also in our historic newspapers, many of which are on microfilms and stored at the library. And many of these papers exist, um, only kind of as available to go to the library to physically see versus, uh, more accessible online. Uh, we talked a lot at the workshop about a new sales and, uh, use tax auditor. Again, one of those generating projects as a home role municipality, um, having somebody that can focus on ensuring that the businesses are remitting the use, specific use tax, um, is really important and, um, would be greatly, um, an enhancement to our existing revenue kind of program that was implemented in twenty nineteen. Um, we also are recently hired our, uh, first GIS program manager. I'm going to be talking on my reports about two amazing programs that she, along with staff, but have worked on, but she's our only one. And I really feel like this could be a good opportunity to partner with schools to get internships during the summer to assist with that program, entering data and a good learning experience for students and kind of expose them to a career path that they might not be as familiar with. And then finally, we, um, had a lot of discussion and, um, much more information provided in attachment A about the housing manager. Uh, we had, at the request of council, reached out to other communities, see about partnerships. They are, um, like we are finding kind of in over their heads with the workload. And so at this time, like Erie's looking to hire a second person and would be willing to share policies, best practices, but don't feel like they have the capacity to physically share a additional person. Um, and again, we can answer more questions at the end of this, um, should council have based upon the information that was provided in attachment A. Um, all right. Wrapping it up, we have, um, a part-time court clerk. Um, so, you know, as we've increased staffing in the police department, that also increases capacity or need within the court system. Um, they recently implemented this in Northland where our judge also serves and has found that it's been great relief to the court staff. Um, as you may know, our, we only have two full-time staff members in the court and, um, they've kind of played two and they kind of play two dual roles, both with the prosecutor and with the judge. And at times, that can cause some conflict of interest. They do a very good job, but it would be nice to have that additional capacity there to help with the increased casework. And then finally, we are looking to repurpose an existing vacant position within the police department to focus on crimes and basically our analysis of where they're occurring, forecasting kind of what the crime patterns are working and really focusing on that as proactive law enforcement. We also feel like this is going to free up some of the work that our detectives are currently doing and allow them to focus on some of these larger cases that we've been seeing in the more recent months and years. All right, looking at capital projects, I was really excited to have you all on the tour with us and a few members of the community. So these will now look familiar as we're flying down Baseline Road. But the first one is that Baseline Gold Hill Crossing. So that's the picture up top. It's almost six lanes going 40, but very likely much higher speed next to RTD Station. And so installing a more modern kind of flashing system, similar to what you see on Baseline in Louisville near the cut-in between Centaurus and the King Supers. And then the second one is a requirement of a 2,000 development agreement. So again, as a reminder, as we come up with our development agreements, a lot of these things impact years later, so being sure to plan for this. But this is a baseline and Roger traffic signal for that neighborhood that is now being triggered for the city to put in and install. We also have a lot of investment stemming from the multimodal transportation plan, but also having a professional transportation engineer on. A lot of work that needs to be done within our signal, pavement, and sign, both assessments for this current or upcoming year. And then really a robust proactive replacement system. And then, you know, a lot of this really goes to the kind of safety and well-being of those community members that are not only driving, but also walking. And we're also thrilled to say that we received $450,000 in grant funding for missing sidewalks. That was a top priority in the multimodal transportation plan. And we have a $50,000 match that we can spend in the coming years for that. And then while we weren't able to physically tour the next two sites, there was handouts, and we have two really awesome opportunities in downtown Lafayette to renovate buildings that the city owns, make them more accessible, make them a wider and more variety to use. One is at the Starkey Building that's in Festival Plaza. We purchased it in 2001, and it largely serves as a storage facility for Art Night Out right now. But we constantly receive requests from the community, as well as our staff, to increase programming there, like birthday parties, HOA meetings, doing a yoga class there. But the way that it's configured and the fact that it's not ADA accessible inside from a restroom perspective, it's just not feasible. So we are currently doing an analysis to determine costs. You'll notice there isn't a budget in 2024, but it's definitely something we want to get on council's radar and may come back for a budget supplemental. Similarly, the theater renovation. We have $400,000 that was committed from the Sundar Development, specifically for this building. Again, it's one of those spaces that could be wonderful, multifaceted, but because of the limitations in the way that it's physically set up, it has a very limited use at this point. And we have one vendor that rents it out for, I think, a couple of thousand dollars a year, but definitely an opportunity where we could have a lot of different great performances, weddings, events, et cetera. And then next year, we'll be moving on to our Phase Two of our Coal Creek Connections. This is the GOCO grant-funded project where we're doing a lot of restoration with plantings, nature play, water access, and trails. And we're really excited to see that and have that partially funded as well. So wrapping up general funds, these are the requested staff. I didn't go over necessarily all of them. The one that we didn't touch on was the assistant librarian position upgrades. Right now, we have several part-time positions that are challenging to recruit for. And, you know, oftentimes, people don't or can't work only 20 hours. And so by adding kind of .75 or the equivalent of .75, we can create two FTE positions to assist with the library, who again, has a very limited full-time staff compared to a lot of our other colleagues. So I will pause there and open it up to any questions on these slides or anything else that you may have for the general fund.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that presentation. And I believe we do have more, right? Some dedicated funds after this piece. Okay, great. So any questions on this portion of the presentation and general fund requests? Mayor Potem?
Yeah, so I had just a couple of questions. In regards to salaries and benefits for 2024, are we seeing an increase in our cost for benefits specifically? And I believe last year, we had a reduction.
Yeah, so overall, we expect the benefits went up about 4.5%, which is actually still pretty good compared to what we've heard from our broker, compared to neighboring agencies. But yeah, there was an increase this year.
Okay. Which actually, the increase is around 6%, so it is really good. So congratulations on that. In regards to the outcome of the salary comp survey, the 2% that you're putting aside for potential adjustments, do you think that's enough? Do we have, or are we going to potentially be looking at supplementals coming forward?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be enough. And it also doesn't need to accrue all at once, right? So what we have been saying is that this is a multi-year probably implementation. And what we really want to address are those that are the most critical needs, where we see the highest gaps. And so we anticipate that that 2% will get taken up. We could be pleasantly surprised. We have been doing a lot of work, especially with our newer employees that have been coming on, making sure that we're competitive. Otherwise, we don't get the candidates. But we really won't know for another month or two kind of how far off and how far that funding will get us. And then with that, we'll be, you know, changing kind of how we structure our pay plan as well. So I imagine in the beginning of the year, we'll come back with kind of the revised pay plan, shifting away from individual positions to kind of broad grades or groups. And at that point, we'll give council an update on what our findings were.
Okay. And then as far as the adjustments that we may be seeing when it comes to salary, I guess, are we looking? So you said it's obviously going to be a multi-year approach, because where, I guess, overall philosophy, where does the city see itself? Are we, as part of this exercise, working on a philosophy, if you will, as far as where compensation should be? Are we going to be at market, low market? Where within the
Yeah.
Probably scale of compensation?
Yeah, those are the conversations that we're starting to have. So as I kind of briefly mentioned, but one of the most important things that we wanted to do before we kind of talked at the leadership level and made that decision is here from our employees, right? I mentioned we have a very good healthcare. I don't know if everyone thinks that's as good of a value. I do as a family member, having it completely free with two kids that get messy. And so we try, we did a lot of different questions related to not only like, how do you feel your base salary is compared to your peers, compared to others? How do you feel your retirement benefits are? We kind of took that total compensation approach to understand what's most important to them. And yes, by and large, like the salary is very important, but that healthcare was number two. And so as we look, because we can't just add salaries, as we look to how do we afford this? Is it a change in our healthcare plan where they pay a little, but then they have a bigger salary? So we're starting in those conversations, but this employee survey really helped inform kind of where their priorities are and where they would be willing to make changes to kind of increase those top two areas.
And I guess is that part of the study as well to understand where we as a city are, right, when it comes to benefits?
Yeah. We're at, they're doing a total comp survey as part of the class.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, other questions from council? Councilor Walton?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions about two of the additional positions, or I guess three, the two positions for open space. I wanted to just confirm that that, there was a note in there that said around the maintenance technician, that there's one person, and then this would be an additional person. And so the, and so then there'd be a total of four people then in that open space?
There would be, I believe, five at that point. We're going to get to it in the dedicated fund section, but we have the open space superintendent, I don't know, Lexi's naturalist role, a maintenance role. And then now to add would be another maintenance role and a program coordinator for all the volunteers that they oversee in programs.
Okay. Sorry, I had, I was lumping all of the
That's okay.
I have a follow-up question. Should I just ask it now, or should I wait? Oh, wait, oh, wait, on the open space. Okay, housing manager, yay. This looks like a staff of five with this huge, huge long list. This is a huge job description. It seems like this is, at least then, a multi-year project if it's only one person. Because this is a huge list. This will have to be prioritized, right? And I, but one bullet point that caught my eye was the second one, develop and manage inclusionary housing policies and regulations. So I'm assuming that that means, let's first discuss and see if there is even direction
Yes.
From the council to investigate and take a look at that inclusionary housing and kind of what that means in terms of the concept of it before we would have somebody be spending time on
Yes. Yeah, like we have a, we have, we have a laundry list of goals we want to accomplish as a, as a community. So yes, it is a multi-year. I mean, it's an ongoing need, honestly. Finding opportunities, creating partnerships, tracking down funding, updating our regulations and our fees, all that stuff needs to be.
I think that there are a couple of things in here now that I know are sprinkled in other areas. And so I just want to share a cautionary tale that when a new position comes into Lafayette, a lot of people are like, oh, great, now they can do that. And a lot gets dumped. I believe that happened to the sustainability coordinator position when we, that was a new position. And so, you know, I think it took a little while to shake, shake some things out. So I definitely would encourage, you know, kind of understanding what other nooks and crannies where some of this activity is happening. And maybe it doesn't immediately come to this role and that there is, you know, there's maybe an opportunity to kind of collaborate more with, you know, for example, the Senior Center, who is doing a lot of housing support for seniors and along with, you know, nonprofit groups. And so that's just one example. The capital projects, it's an increase in the budget, but when I compare it to 2022, it's not that much of an increase. But I guess the list seems long. And I, maybe the fact that we did our, our field trip. And it just is, I guess my question really is that, is the list longer? Do, do we, can we take on all of these projects? One of the things that I think is great about our community and the way we staff and manage is that we come at it lean and mean, right? And so what that takes, though, is a lot of time project managing. And these are a lot, this seems like a long list. So I guess I wanted to get a sense from you, is this a longer list than normal? The budget's up a little bit? Or do we really feel like we have, you know, gold star project management support to really make sure that we can manage these projects and make sure we're getting them done, not, you know, trying to do them within a dedicated timeline, within a dedicated budget, and not start to have things slip and, and then, which usually equals additional costs?
Do you want to, I mean, most of them are transportation projects where we've added, you know, staffing and staffing resources within the engineering group. Kind of the difference from this capital prop, look, program is maybe not necessarily the quantity, but the types of projects. So they're not the big shiny ones. They're the ones really getting our house in order so that we can have those bigger projects, more impactful ones, right? The signal stuff is not super crazy. I think we also contract out for a lot of those assessments as well and don't do it in-house, so part of that funding is for that. And they're also multi-year projects. These are not all ones that, right, we're saying we're going to start A and finish this year. They are definitely kind of the ongoing stuff, which is the nature of it.
So what is an example of one or two or three or four or five that have project management as part of the budget? Because that still takes somebody on our staff to manage, project managers. So i- is there an example of one of the larger projects or something that would have, like, I mean, I know some of these federal-funded projects that we're doing, we have hefty contracts for project management.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, and you can respond to, but like the 119th Inter Appahoe One, right? We're utilizing OTAC, I believe. We're also utilizing OTAC for South Boulder Road.
Yeah, I would say a lot of the ones that are new to the list don't have federal funding, which makes them substantially less complicated to administer. So we've got outside CM support, construction management support on the two with federal funding. You know, the other ones with us at this point being hopefully fully staffed, we've got some in-house resources. You know, we've brought Jeff Nelson on board, who has a lot of construction experience. We were able to fill the civil engineer one position. So between the two of them, we've, I think we have pretty good breadth of construction management experience. But there, you know, and then hopefully with the MMTP wrapping up shortly, that will free up some capacity for our transportation engineer to shift some degree away from the planning aspect to more of the implementation side of things. I think at this point, it's looking like management.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just think like really, take a look at the teams that you have on these and, you know, is a construction manager, just check with, check with the skillsets that you have, and maybe there's an opportunity for training and kind of sharpening the pencil on the project management skills. Because that, that has been something that has at times been challenging and sometimes the missing piece. And then now we're back to council for more and longer time. And so, yeah, just a, a bit of a challenge to take a close look and that we don't get over our skis on some of that stuff.
The other thing that we recently hired was a procurement manager, contracts and procurement manager, because that was one of the other missing kind of gaps of how we were running the contracts, going out to bid, kind of best bids, things like that. So having not only kind of the staff in the departments, but support and finance as well for those types of services has, I think, really streamlined and found some kind of process improvement.
Are the boards and commissions in the next section?
We do not have any specific slides on boards and commissions.
Do you mean how much?
Then I just wanted to ask, the zoning board of adjustment, isn't that now part of the planning commission? So we have a line item in there in the 2024 recommended budget for that board of $200, it seems like we could strike that, since we don't have that board anymore.
Do you want us to update all the resolutions for $200?
Well.
Or can we roll that into the planning commission?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Well, I don't see a planning commission. Oh, yes, I do. Okay, so now their budget will be $5,800. Okay, yeah, but you understand the point there.
Yes.
The historic preservation board, what is their budget for? I haven't ever been liaison to that guy.
Yeah, so the preservation board is funded from that self-storage, self-tax. Yeah, and they use the money primarily on programmatic things like grants. They have a grant program every year. And surveys of historic properties to understand which properties are eligible for preservation, and we can use it for other, other preservation-related purposes. So the board is actually working to kind of reevaluate their budget and how they want to approach using that, including what the grant programs look like. I think council might hear something from the board later on next year.
And so what is the process then, through the budgeting process for a board or commission to put in requests? Is there a formal process for that?
I think it probably depends on the boards and sort of what's in their charter. But typically, when they have needs, they've come before us. But we didn't hear anything this year.
All right. And so, so the historic preservation board sort of has a designated tax that, and budget. So, but that's, but like, I don't see LoSAC listed here for the legacy tax and things like that. So is that just? So is that just managed in a different line and not under the boards and commissions?
Yeah, so it's, we're getting more consistent and it's somewhat dependent, right? So the historic preservation board itself administers this grant program. LoSec doesn't administer the .25 that funds their operations. So there isn't any like grant programs that they have. So we've kind of, it's not apples to apples, but it definitely is getting a little bit cleaner.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question while you're down that, down that vein? The planning commission budget, that's simply for the rec, the rec center passes that we're providing, planning commission?
I don't believe rec center passes are provided.
I thought we were doing that like as of a couple of years ago.
Not to my knowledge.
I remember several different emails, but I feel like the answer was not.
So what's their budget for? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it's, it's a combination of training and just staffing and like dinners. Because the commission acts a lot like city council, they have early meetings. It makes it difficult for them to get here without dinner. So we do provide food for the commission. But we also have done a retreat in the past a couple of years to kind of help the board on governance issues. And we, we want to continue to do that somewhat regularly. So those are the types of budget expenses we do with the planning commission.
Okay. And then a quick question regarding the Rocky Mountain Metro Airport Community Noise Reduction Roundtable?
As for dues.
As for dues?
Oh, so we got to pay to join up.
Yep.
And what is the, my final question is what is the council contingency for 2024?
It is still $50,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Other questions? I just had a few quick ones myself. So real quick, we had you, towards the end of your presentation, you were talking about the additional FTE for the library position upgrade. So you have a, just, just 1.75? I thought you were saying multiple positions.
Yes, so currently we have a, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but a 20-hour position and a 30-hour position. And we've had challenges recruiting retaining. She can tell you numbers about how turnover has been. And so by adding another .5, right, which is 20 hours and another .25, you can combine full-time positions through that.
The library has a primarily part-time staff. And so our turnover can be, this year we're approaching probably 40%. So it's just really hard for folks to have 20 hours a week.
But it's, yeah, you're hiring two people. That's, I was just confused about that. Thank you. And then for, we talked about sidewalk, missing links and not repair. I'm happy to see that in there. Of close to half a million in grant funding. Where'd that grant come from? Multiple grants, any, I mean, you don't.
See that? Yeah.
And then it's like, so that's, that's, that grant money is going to go towards these repairs that are just going to be done ongoing? Like, is there like a certain timeline, just for the residents sake? Any idea?
So it is specifically for missing links, not repairs.
Got it.
So we provided a broad list in the grant application. So next year we anticipate bringing a consultant on board to go through that list and winnow it into what we can afford. And then we would move forward with construction.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, no. No, it's not that. I just had a question.
Okay. In Exhibit A in the 2024 budget summary by fund, we do have the, still have the human services fund. I just, I figured this would be appropriate time to just ask an update on that. We, we're still sitting at 720,000 right now, right?
Yeah, I think for this grant cycle, we're giving out 600,000. That's about what was brought in for the first year collections. We received over 100 applications, well over that 600,000. The committee is actually meeting, I believe, next week to start to discuss that. And then at your, I believe, one of your first meetings in November, we'll be bringing forward their recommendations for approval.
Wow, okay. Good. I'm glad to see that that's moving along. And then finally, I forget where, Councilor Walton, you had that, that document pulled up of the different boards and commissions, how much we allocate. Part of that, that exhibit was funding towards Sister Carmen. We give 25,000 and as we sort of dive into the conversations on, on water, water fees going up and usage and all of that. And, you know, if we do, I feel like a lot of council members are interested in seeing how we can explore to expand that.
I'll be touching on that later in the presentation.
Got it. Okay. Awesome. Well, is there any other questions? If not, we can move forward. Oh, real quick to Mayor Post M and then we'll go to Council.
Just a good question regarding the ARPA funding. So I know we have not designated where that money is going to be programmed in yet. So, and I guess maybe if you're going to address it in the future, because I was just wondering, is that something that we could potentially tap into for Sister Carmen funding? I don't know what the rules are.
Not use that for utility fees.
Thank you.
You can use it towards the water fund, help offset, but again, it's a small percentage.
Yeah.
When we're talking about it. But yes, I do plan to have more of a robust conversation in the future. It's already budgeted, so it wasn't part of kind of budget pieces, but as we look.
And same with the Broncos money, I'm assuming?
Yeah, the Broncos money, we already.
It's been earmarked.
It's always been done?
Yeah.
That's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a softball question. Lots going on here, yeah. So when you're, I really appreciate what you've emphasized and prioritized. And it feels very much like, I know we keep talking about when are we going to reach redevelopment pace? I think we're there. I think I'm the only one here. But I feel like what we're looking at budgetarily is, and I heard you use the phrase, take care of our own house or something like that. But I really feel like this is a good, a good look at how do we, how do we shore up area, any areas that might not be strong enough to continue to support our community, but we can influence those, those areas to, to help have us, give us more, or a rich, richer community support structure from the city? Is that sort of how you look at this or is it just?
I think this is fast pitch. I mean, I think we're trying to.
What do you think the answer is?
This is a softball. You can say anything. They have no idea what you're going to say.
I think that we've definitely, you know, having a chief financial officer on board for the last couple of years have had an opportunity to really look at not just one or two years, but really like as we come to build out, what are those sustainable revenue sources? What can we rely on for development in the future? What can we rely on? Sales tax. And really ensure that our revenues and our, you know, budget kind of align and don't go like this in 10 years so that you're in a predicament. So I feel like we've, we're working on a really good progress towards that.
I appreciate it because I'm working with SRAQ, there's a lot, Sustainability Resilience Advisory Commission. We talk a great deal about resilience and vulnerability and risk. And I feel like we, you know, along with the climate action plan, there are federal resources to help us in areas where we might not know how to apply. So I, I feel like we're being set up in a good way so that we can take a deeper look into just in efficiency and community support and equity issues that all fold into those bits and pieces. So I, I just appreciate that, where, where we are so far.
All right. Sorry, I missed that. But are there any more questions?
No, no, there's no more questions.
All right, let's move along.
All right. Thanks. So as many of you know, because we've showed the chart before in the pie graph, we have many dedicated funds. Some of the ones that we're going to be focusing on right now are in our special revenue fund. So talking a lot about what's going to be funded in our conservation trust, our parks and open space and our legacy fund. And then we'll pause briefly for questions there and then shift over to our enterprise fund to wrap up the evening. So as I alluded to, and looking forward to the second part of the question, in open space, again, we have three positions there currently. In 2019, the pros, the parks, open space and recreation, strategic plan, identified additional resources for our ever-growing kind of community and open space needs. So we are looking to add one FTE for maintenance and then one FTE for program management. Again, we do a ton with outside kind of company, not companies, but organizations. We have a robust volunteer day. We work with Thorn Nature Kids. We work with Boulder County Youth Corps. All that requires a lot of coordination with very little staff to do it. In the recreation center on our CIP tour, we talked about kind of evaluating the Roseluarez pool, but also looking kind of as a system and as recreation has changed, especially post-COVID, what do we do for different facilities to offer programming? And so we have architectural visioning going underway and looking to kind of utilize outdoor spaces if it's feasible and if it makes sense. And so we will be coming forward more with that once their study and visioning is kind of kicked off. As is best practice, we do a playground replacement annual program. So next year, we're excited to have Ophelia Miramonte Park and Cherrywood Park being upgraded. You could say that bottom picture is kind of what a more newly renovated, accessible park looks like. Also looking at upgrading our city park restrooms for enhancement in the drinking fountain of the restroom facility. And then also last year, or I guess this year, we started implementing a rollout of a new central irrigation control system replacement. The one that we had was not being supported anymore. And this also can help with kind of those smart irrigation practices. When it rains, it turns off. And so really helping with some of our water conservation efforts. Dedicated funds, so you guys were able to tour this awesome facility. But in addition to some of the capital projects there, we're also looking to do a drought and water conservation plan. This is going to help us with some of our reliability analysis. A lot of it has been based upon past climate and we know that the system's becoming less and less reliable. And also have some demand reduction strategies so that we know during different stages and information that we have available, what we might need to do to maintain our systems. And then our water resource analyst is retiring. It's been a contracted position forever. And so we're looking to increase that to full-time and also help in our capacity to address that water conservation and planning. And then as you can see on the right-hand side, Phase Two of our water reclamation improvements, which is bond proceed funded. Also had some robust conversations about our algae controlling reservoir monitoring. So right now we use a lot of chemicals to control algae. Algae happens in Colorado in the heat. And so we need to control it to have the integrity of our water system. But what we found with new technology is that by getting this kind of reservoir monitoring system, it use sonic, ultrasonic treatments that kind of makes the algae not grow anymore. And so it's definitely a more sustainable, but also should have a return on investment as we've seen our increased cost for chemicals go up. And then our final design of a water treatment plant, which is anticipated to be construction in 2025 that we will talk a little bit more about in the water funds. Again, wrapping up dedicated funds, we have 2.5 positions being requested in these. And they are two in open space and one in our water fund, or half of one in our water fund.
All right.
Happy to answer questions on this.
Thank you. Questions on this portion of the presentation? Councilor Walton?
Thanks. So I just wanted to follow up on the open space. So I appreciated in the staff memo, the nod to, and the recognition of the ranger program. This was discussed at length with the open space committee. And they talked about, you know, three different models of, and there, there was, there was a lot of discussion. And I think that there, they, they will be happy to see, I'm guessing, the two new positions. But I'm, I'm interested to understand how, where the, where the, how the ranger program, where it kind of stands? Is it something that's on the horizon? It's, it's kind of been talked about, you know, a lot over the last probably five years or more. And so it's kind of always been a back burner thing. And so kind of wondering where you think that might go? And if, if there's just more opportunity for LoSec to be sharing the benefits of our ranger program with council to advocate for the program?
So back in the day when we actually had in the budget for some rangers, at least one ranger position in open space, we had some internal meetings. We started talking about what's the future of that position? It was discovered as it was a little bit more complex to just bring in a ranger and have him work with the police department on that. But one of the, one of the things that we considered in all of that is that that position really needed to be broader than open space. So if we're going to have a ranger program, seems like it ought to take in parks, all public land, open space being a big part of that. So we, we hired a natural resource coordinator and took the approach to, to take an educational approach to those that out on the trail in open space needed to hear things that, that would be helpful so that we could have enforcement but passively. So then the future of that is that we would like to revisit that in the future, but it's going to be broader than just open space.
So how, this is maybe a tag team question with Chief Basher. As I understand it, we are, our open space department is a patron of the benefit of our police department. There are times when they are out in the field on our open space and seeing things that need to be reported. How, have you seen an increase of those kinds of reports? And how are they being prioritized so that they don't continue to? How are they?
Certainly we're seeing.
So they can start to be addressed?
Yeah, certainly we're seeing an increase. And I think in conjunction with the police department, we need to come up with a system for how we can better address some of those, those items. We are encouraging the public to contact PD when, when they see something, along with staff. So perhaps you have some more to add?
And since this is a budget conversation, like, you know, does it influence the budget? And, and, and what kind of opportunities there from a staffing standpoint then for, to support what we're seeing in our own open space?
Yeah, as was mentioned, we encourage community to call us when they see a violation. Staff also contact us when they see something, primarily dog at large, those kinds of things. People off of the paths into the open space areas where we don't want them to be. We have to manage, balance all of our staff with everything else in the community. As our community grows, it continually puts stress on staff, on the police department, to be able to patrol and be available to handle stolen vehicles. We have a priority. Unfortunately, higher priority crimes are burglaries, auto thefts, assaults, homicides. Open space violations are at the bottom of the stack. It's just the nature of the beast. In order to, to focus solely on open space, we would need to have dedicated staff that does nothing but that.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the options that, that they had looked at, you know, whether, how it could be, you know, maybe, how it could be maybe co-funded and that sort of thing. But definitely, we're definitely seeing ranger programs in areas around us. And so I think that I just, I guess I'm taking advantage of the opportunity to make sure it's on the radar of my fellow council members and hope that, you know, LoSec will be more vocal and starting to educate and advocate for that early in the process next year to figure out how that can either begin and grow or, you know, how, how it can, how it can at least start. And I think, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversation about sort of the hybrid piece of it, but that, but understanding that where the priority falls and, you know, on law enforcement versus, you know, as dedicated ranger staff. Because it is, it's, it's different and the same, you know, and it was interesting to learn about it. So I think, I think that from LoSec's perspective, they are. So I think, I think that from LoSec's perspective, they are, they understand the priorities when a call comes in and where it's ranking for Lafayette Police, but also recognizing it's an investment in the community. And if we're seeing, you know, they want to advocate for, you know, maintaining and protecting that investment. So, yeah. So I think, you know, you're, you're, you are referring to some of the calls that they get, but they're also seeing things like destruction of plants that are being planted in trying to encourage restoration areas. They're seeing trash and, you know, things that are really concerning, that are a public safety issue, that they're seeing in some of the open space. It's a concern. And the, I think that LoSec will at least be happy to be seeing the staff double, or more, not quite double, I guess, with these two positions. So thank you. I just want to shine the light on a little bit about the opportunity for the ranger program in the future.
All right. Thank you. If there isn't anything else, we can go to the final portion of the presentation, I believe, which is surrounding our utilities, water. Dr. Arthur?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So I am going to do just a quick overview of what's on the city utility bill, go a little deeper on the water utility. Council, I know, has spent a lot of time on this topic and was happy to see you all get an opportunity to see some of these things in person last week on the tour. I'm going to talk a little bit about key drivers of water costs, key infrastructure risk, and then I will turn it over to Director Billingsley to talk about the financial side. And then interim city administrator Doling will wrap things up with some of the strategies that we have been looking at to mitigate impacts to customers. So we call it the water bill, but it actually has a bunch of stuff on it. So I just wanted to highlight for folks that the bill you get from the city every month includes multiple different services. So the typical water bill, about 45% of it is for water. You know, that's what you drink or bathe with or put on your lawn. It's probably a little bigger portion in the summer, a little less in the winter. About a third of the bill is wastewater, which is what goes down the drain. Smaller portion, about a tenth of that is for stormwater, which is managing precipitation events. Solid waste is on the monthly bill. It's contracted through Republic, but we collect that on the city utility bill. And then there's a small portion of that that goes to the sidewalk repair and replacement. So just as we talk about percentage increases in different parts of the bill, it's not percentage increase to the overall bill, it's to that portion of the bill. And then just also worth noting, as we look at comparing to other communities, not everyone provides the same services or has the same services on the bill. Shifting gears a little bit, so over the past several years, we've talked a lot about the cost of water for growth, and that is one of the drivers of our infrastructure needs, but it's not the only one. But council has updated water dedication and cash and lieu requirements beginning in 2020, and the current default is for new development to dedicate water rights. Cash and lieu is only permitted for small projects or ones specifically approved by council. That cash and lieu amount is updated annually by resolution based on the average cost of CBT shares, and we'll be updating that again, or we're questioning if you update it again as part of the budget process this year. So, so then why do existing customers still need to help pay for major capital project investments? One of the key factors is aging infrastructure. So infrastructure needs to be replaced at or preferably just prior to the end of its useful life. We have a lot of infrastructure that falls in that category. Cost escalation, to provide service, the city needs to buy goods and services, and though the cost of those goods and services has continued to escalate. Changes in the reliability of our water supply along the front range. There have been changes in runoff timing, more variable precipitation, we need to account for that. You know, also note that 80% of the precipitation in Colorado falls on the western slope, and 90% of the water in Colorado gets used for agriculture. So even things that aren't happening in Lafayette, or that aren't happening in local water supply have a pretty notable impact on us. We've talked a bunch about changes in demand. You've seen this graph before, but just a reminder, the blue line is a five-year average, the 20-year line, or the orange line is a 20-year average. You know, and if, as you look at that, you can see that in the winter months, our usage is really about the same, not a noticeable increase, you're not seeing a big change due to growth. What is notable on this graph is that summer peak just seems to keep getting longer. We're having more months where people are irrigating outside, and that has an impact on some of the things we're going to talk about in a moment. We talked about this a little bit on the tour, I'm just going to briefly recap. So the city currently uses about 5,000 acre feet per year. So an acre foot is roughly a football field with a foot of water. So if you picture going mile high and digging down to sea level, that's about how much water we use in a year. We currently have about 5,100 acre feet of storage, or about one year supply. Why that might sound okay, it's actually really concerning. So just for comparison, Aurora Water, which is a well-run utility, they'd be going into stage three drought restrictions when they have 12 months or less of water storage. And that means that at that point, they're looking at, that's their most restrictive stage, and they're looking at potentially curtailing 100% of outdoor use. So our best case is a stage three level drought restriction, because other utilities are looking at making sure that if we're headed into a drought, that we are, that we have enough supply available to make it through that without extreme restrictions. So really, we probably should have closer to three years of storage capacity so that we have time to adjust. We're going to dig into that more hopefully next year if the budget request is approved to do a more updated drought plan. That's where we're starting from. So with all of the pending water supply projects we've talked about, that would get us to about 14,000 acre feet, which is at least in the ballpark of that 15,000 that we probably should have now. If you factor in increased project, increased demand due to climate change, so higher temperatures are going to tend to drive higher outdoor use, we should probably be aiming for closer to 18,000 square feet, or 18,000 acre feet. If you factor in growth, we should probably be more in the ballpark of 22,000 acre feet. And again, we're still comparing that to the 14,000 acre feet of projects we have on the books. And then if you start to factor into that the climate impact on reliability of supply as we look at more variable precipitation, changes in runoff timing, that three years of storage may not be enough of a safety factor. And then again, that's something we're going to look at hopefully next year, getting into a more detailed drought plan. So just to kind of recap that, growth is certainly a piece of our challenge, and council has taken steps to address that, so we're not making things worse. But we still really need to be making significant investments in water supply just to ensure reliability for our existing customers into the future. Shifting gears to water treatment, which is another really big ticket cost item. So as you saw from that previous slide, we have been seeing peak days of around 10 million gallons in the summer due to outdoor irrigation, and the number of days in that range has just continued to increase. So a million gallons is about three acre feet, so again, roughly three football fields. So three football fields, 10 feet deep in one day is kind of what we're using on a typical day in the summer. The aging condition of our treatment plant is such that it can marginally produce 10 million gallons a day. So we could hit that peak if everything is running smoothly, nothing's broken. We only have one treatment plant. So if anything breaks during peak demand, we have very little time to fix it. Had an opportunity to see some things at the plant. I'm not sure if folks caught it on the tour, we're currently running on a backup generator. Our aged generator decided to catastrophically fail. We did a mad scramble, and we're fortunately able to get one locally. It's a state requirement that we have a generator onsite to be able to back up, but that's costing us $5,000 a week that we're going to keep spending until we can either find a way to fix the existing one or get a replacement. I think I also saw things that were hanging from chains under holes in the roof. You know, we've had to cut holes in the roof to get things in and out to, to make emergency repairs to keep that facility running. So it is a challenge. So what we are looking at is adding about 10 million gallons a day of additional treatment capacity, which does leave some room for growth, and we, through our tax fees, can reasonably have growth support paying for that, but it also provides critical reliability for our existing customers. Just, just to add insult to injury, I suppose, we also don't know what the future may hold for regulations. Our existing plant is what's known as conventional treatment. You saw at the first phase, sort of settles out dirt, the second phase runs it through filters, and the third phase disinfects it with bleach. And that's the technology we have. And it is solid, time-tested technology, but as science evolves, there's become a greater understanding of contaminants in water and potential health impacts of those. It is not beyond the realm of possibility that in the next 20 or 30 years, we are going to have unfunded mandates similar to what we saw at the water reclamation plant, where we have to modernize that technology to hit higher standards. And finally, our water distribution system, so the vast network of pipes under our streets that deliver water to every home and business in the city. We have an aging pipe system. Much of that is constructed of iron pipe that is proven to be not terribly well-suited to our soiled conditions and rusts through. That photo is what happens when an iron pipe rusts through and water rushes out of it. Ballpark, we've been having a, we're not supposed to say it because we're a superstitious bunch, but a water main break, that's only once, not three times, so hopefully we're okay, roughly every two weeks. Many of our water valves are also in poor condition, which results in more widespread outages and longer duration outages. Every time we have to turn a portion of the system on or off, there's a risk of contamination. There's also a risk of it causing something else to fail. These issues generally involve staff involved pulling an all-nighter to make a repair so that the water's back on in the morning and the street is repaired. Typically, these are probably costing the ballpark of $20,000 apiece to replace often just a foot or so of pipe by the time you get done with staff time and equipment and materials and putting the road back together and repaving sidewalks. One of our more recent ones was actually closer to $200,000, which is for context is about 2% of the total budget just for, for one water main issue to replace a relatively small section of pipe. So there's really no reason to believe that the iron pipes are just going to stop rusting on their own, and really every indication that if we don't continually work to try to get ahead of this, that it's just going to increase in the future, and we're going to have greater costs and greater impacts to the public. So to kind of pull that all together, water is really arguably one of the most essential services that the city provides. You know, even if we lose the ability to provide safe water for only a few hours due to infrastructure failure or a natural disaster, consequences are really pretty severe. We serve a major hospital. It can take months to get equipment and parts. It can take weeks to flush and disinfect a water system even after a short pressure loss. And it can take decades for a community to recover from a major utility incident. Our landscaping and tree canopy are at high risk for total loss even in a minor drought. Again, we don't have supply to meet irrigation demands in any sort of prolonged drought. And it's, you know, not realistic to just cut usage by a third. So we really need to figure out how to get our infrastructure caught up to what our demands have been and will be in the future. None of this is terribly unique to Lafayette, so just be aware of that. It's a national issue. If you were to Google infrastructure crisis or aging infrastructure, you'll find examples from across the country. You know, you see things regularly about aging infrastructure, infrastructure that hasn't been able to handle extreme or often unprecedented weather events. It's not unique to the front range either. These major water projects that we're participating in, we are in most cases a pretty small partner, so other folks are out pursuing water. We have, we have a stake in Gross Reservoir, which is a Denver water project to improve their climate resiliency. We are part of the Windy Gap firming project, which has 14 participants. We're only about 2% of that project. We are one of 15 communities in the Northern Integrated Supply Project, or NISP. We're only about 4.5% of that project. So Lafayette is not the only community that is actively out trying to shore up its water infrastructure, and we are certainly not the only ones that are looking at how to pay for that. So wanted to provide that context. And then just kind of to wrap things up, there really isn't a great option to not increase investment in the community's water infrastructure. You know, we've nudged things down the road with deferred maintenance. We're, I would say, behind the curve on planning for climate change, and we could cross our fingers and hope that the science is wrong, or pipes start to rust, or that nothing new comes up in the next 20 to 30 years. But, you know, those are pretty big gambles for an essential service for 30,000 people. So what we are proposing on the infrastructure front in terms of this near-term approach is something that's, I would say, is a moderate approach. We're not attempting to go after this aggressively, but we're also trying to at least get back in the zone. So we, in all likelihood, will run into some unanticipated challenges in the next 20, 30 years, but we would at least like to get ourselves in a realm where we have some, some room to be able to respond to those. So that's kind of the, the real quick summary of where our infrastructure is at. So I was going to turn it over at this point to Director Billingsley to talk about the financial side of that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so this is a visual that you have all seen before. And what this illustrates is, is a couple of things. First, what you see as, as the gray area is, is a, a picture of the, the cumulative revenues that, that we will need over the next 10 years to, to fund the, the operations, the capital investment, and the debts, debts, herbus on the, the bonds that, that we will be issuing to, to complete these, these projects in, in the near term. And the two most important points on this chart is the yellow line, which is the, the path of revenue that, that we will need to make sure that we do not run any, any deficits. So, but the ultimate goal here is to try to get that, that yellow line to as, as closely match to the, to the top of the gray area as we can. And so what, what we are recommending to accomplish that is two years' worth of 21% that is a two-years' worth of 21% rate increases, then followed by a drop to 5% and then trailing off to 3% by the year 2033. For point of comparison, what we have provided on this chart is what it would take in terms of an annual rate increase if we were to front-load it all in the first year. So it would be approximately 45%. But again, this is just for comparison purposes. What you see on this table here is when we came before you in April with our consultant Raftelis, and we first presented to you the base case that had two-years' worth of 21% rate increases, you asked us to get as creative as we could. So we did. So we engaged with our great consultant Raftelis as well as our financial advisor, and we had them run a series of financing scenarios that we could potentially use to try to help keep the initial year's rate increases below 21%. So that they did. What you see on this table here is the top of, the top five. And what I want you to focus on is the goal here is move from red to green sort of as quickly as we can, right? Because anything in the orange and the yellow zone infers that they are annual rate increases that are relatively high, so that's 7, 8, 9%. And so what you see with the options, 1 through 5, is what our financial advisor did is they used creative slash aggressive financing strategies such as interest-only payments, as well as what's called capitalized interest, which what that means is that in the first couple of years, if you can't necessarily afford your full debt service, they will add it, they will add your first years of interest payments to the overall bonds, which means you like take on more debt, but you're going to be paying interest on top of interest, which you can do. It's a tool. But over the long term, over amortization periods between 20 to 30 years, what that does is it adds costs, which are shown on the far right-hand side part of this table. So there are, again, two important things to note. If we opt to go with, or if, excuse me, if you opt to go with lower rate increases upfront, that means you are locked in to higher rate increases for a longer period of time. Like, you're not going to drop below the eights and the sevens. Like, you aren't going to have the full exit ability to do so. And also, over the full year, or over the full term of the financings, it will cost, cost the city or the rate payer between 14 and 20, 25 million more. So when you take that table and you simplify it down, what you see here on this is you see kind of the bookends of options in terms of the rate increase for 2024. So at 8%, it would create an additional cost to the rate payer of $25 million. And when that 8% rate increase is translated into the tier-one impact, that equates to an increase of $2.72 per month. When that 8% is translated into the average single-family residential home, it is $5 per month. And then at the other end of that range, at a 21% increase, that equates to a $7.14 per month increase at tier-one. And then, again, the average impact for a single-family residential house is approximately $12 per month. And with that, I will hand it over to Administrator Ollington to wrap things up.
Thank you. So we know that these are challenging conversations. We've been having them for the last several years. And so I kind of wanted to revisit some of the things that we've done, especially as it relates to protecting our most vulnerable populations, and then talk about some of the programs that we have in place and some potential, as the mayor alluded to, expansions of programs. Because we hear everyone that this is a huge hardship for those that are in our lowest tiers, and we want to make a good, sound financial decision for the city. And we also want to balance that with the needs of our residents that may need assistance should council move forward with staff's recommendation. So again, in 2021, we did two ordinances. One was to eliminate interest charge on delinquent accounts. We realized that that was a pretty antiquated program. And we also adjusted our gallon allegations, right? So before, you had a tier system in the first tier that went all the way up to 10,000. That usually triggers a lot of outdoor use. So we really shorted up and ensured that the lower rates for the first 3,000 were really for those essential indoor use. At that same time that we did the tier structure, we also did some rate increases, but really did disproportionate increases, right? So we kept the lowest tier at a lower increase, justifiably so, increasing the outer, upper-level tiers by a higher percentage, because that's largely what is driving a lot of these needs, is the outdoor use. We also have several conservation programs. And in 2024, we're fortunate to have received a grant of $40,000 from the Colorado Conservation Water Board. That's going to help us augment our resource contract, Resource Central contract. They are the ones that provide a lot of these programs to help remove lawns, garden in a box. And what we're really focusing on in 2024 is some increased in low-income programs, including gardening in a box and conservation programs for indoor usage, such as faucets and toilets. They'll be continuing to do lawn removal and sprucler audits. The other thing that we've heard is the concern about impacts to HOAs, homeowners' associations. And so fortunately, some communities have been able to get a grant with Northern Water. But when we talked with Resource Central, we asked them if they'd be willing, they don't address HOAs right now, but if they would be willing to do focus groups with our HOAs to better understand kind of where they're at in a process of turf removal or conservation, and then pilot some programs starting next year with some of that funding. So we're trying to address it from kind of the two major concerns that we hear. Some other things that we have thought of that I think that would be beneficial is we have a fairly short window for late payments. During COVID, we, like, once we were allowed to charge utility bills again after COVID, we had a more robust repayment process, kind of depending on the size of your bill and your income. And we would be open to doing that instead of one blank slate of you have just an eight-week grace period. So working with our community members that may have fallen behind to come up with payment plans versus just eight weeks and then shut off, it takes more timing to get that funding available. We've also talked about expanding partnerships with Sister Carmen. Again, based upon the funding that we provide them, they are only able to address a certain amount of need. And so we could increase the funding that we provide to them to reach a broader audience. We could also jointly partner with them to have an application here at City Hall for those that have expressed, you know, desire to not go to a nonprofit to ask for help and really help facilitate those conversations better. The other piece that we realize is that for a lot of our manufactured homes and our multifamilies, they're on what's called a master meter. And so they typically do not see their individual water bill. So providing assistance through Sister Carmen's water bill assistance program isn't helpful. But what is, is providing that rent assistance, which is all-encompassing of rent and utilities. So expanding that program as well. So again, staff is open to coming up with ideas that for less than additional $20 million, we could really try to help those that are going to be impacted the most should you want to move forward with the recommendation. Again, annual cost for the Sister Carmen expansion is estimated at $50,000. We had written in the memo that there was a budget line item for economic development incentive programs that when we came to you all last year and asked for $100,000, we had said we were going to try to grow this program. This is the first year of use. We haven't hit that $100,000 mark. And so if we wanted to try to reshift that money from small business to do this sort of pilot program and really better understand the need, staff would be open to that as well. So I'll go back to that, but since I know I will likely not get to this step, if, once we start talking water rates, want to briefly, before we open public hearing, talk to you about next steps. Again, second reading, should it be passed tonight, adoption of the pay plan, adoption of fees. We also have other fees, including golf and recreation fees, and then your general improvement district budgets. So we are happy to go back to water rates and answer any questions that you may have, and then we'll open it up for public hearing.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. Let's ask for any questions for this portion, and then we'll get into consideration of a decision. Counselor Sampson.
So I'm looking at my water bill. There are six different lines. Of those, three are water-related. So water, wastewater, stormwater. When you say 21% increase, or whatever increase, is that applied strictly to one of those lines?
Yeah, that is specifically talking about your water bill. So again, when you look at kind of that, this, right? So this is what your bill has on all of those. So when we talk 21%, I mean, it is a significant number. That does not mean your entire bill will increase by that. It actually will be less because the other rates that we're looking at are not nearly as high as the 21%.
So just the water, light blue?
Just the water, light blue.
So maybe I, just to clarify, are you saying that the wastewater line and the stormwater line could go up as well?
Yeah, so we had talked about that based upon the rate study back in April, I believe. And so I believe one of them is projected to be 5% and one is 9%. And then our trash contract is based upon CPI that council approved when we switched to Republic.
Okay. And when would that come to us?
Next meeting with all those fee resolutions.
Oh.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to refer back to that opening slide from Director Billingsley that I'm not sure if that was a thought experiment, or the 45% increase out of the gate is actually a realistic solution?
Yeah, it would probably be somewhere between 39 and 45% once we actually get to the one, yeah.
Assuming we did do 45% of that, what's the, are there externalities that could keep that from panning out over the next 10 years as solving our challenge that we have here with how do we handle the debt that we're in right now? Would that, would that do it for us? Guaranteed?
No guarantees.
Yeah.
We can't with climate change and everything else. But what it does do in kind of two different senses is, one, yeah, kind of that huge initial kind of lump to give us some time to really figure that out. But it also allows us to have some ability to do future debt financing, which, as you see, is kind of lower rates. If we do kind of those lower rates with the debt financing proposals that we came back with, our capacity to issue any other debt would be pretty null and void, and therefore, you would need to do that rate increase instead of try to lessen it with a debt option.
But we'd still be viable, if this did pan out, we'd still be viable for lower rates in the future?
Yeah, lower rates.
And it's just to be clear, I think we're in their estimated impact of climate change. What a surprise. I mean, it's 100 degrees in Paraguay right now, like, in the middle of the winter. So there's some variability that I think could be potentially shocking. By 2040, we're looking at all the ice in Antarctica, sorry, the Arctic, being gone. So by 2040, we're going to have a lot of other issues potentially. So the last, the far end of this, I think there could be some pretty big impacts that we can't even see yet. And I don't know that, if I understand correctly, this is also assuming no unprecedented swings in inflation over the next, or our infrastructure?
Yeah, so I believe what we Yeah, so I believe what we model out with a reduction in inflation to, I think, four, four and a half percent for the next eight to 10 years.
So there's a lot we have to like speculate on.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that have to go right for us.
And that's why I sort of get nervous with the 5%, you know, guaranteeing that piece of it. I think the intention is that the bigger upfront, the quicker it goes down and kind of the order of magnitude is to be determined.
No, I just, you brought up pretty good points. And then in addition to that, it's you're thinking about our infrastructure as well as we were talking about, you know, stuff is crumbling daily. It feels like almost, right? And so, you know, I don't want to get into this discussion now, but you have to think about our ability to dead out in our debt allowance and what we, how constrained are we for future improvements to our infrastructure as well? You know, you have to keep all these things in mind when we're making this decision. But anyway, sorry, that's, that's for our later part in the discussion. So any other questions? All right, we can move forward with the public input.
All right, we'll do that and then we'll go back to any.
Thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, please fill out a yellow form here. You'll have five minutes to speak, you know, in regards to this, this topic.
Well, they had, I did a personal analysis based on the sizes, what it would be for each scenario homeowner, large home, small home, rental. It varied over this time period of a 21% for the smaller homes for yearly increase, I don't know, like $150. I mean, make yearly increase, a monthly increase when you total, maybe 200. For the larger homes, and I forget now, I should have brought it, I don't know, 1,000 or 1,500, something like that, maybe more, more. But those are the big homes can afford it. So what I'm saying is it's tough. However, when that bill comes in, hopefully, and you know, I'm just a regular middle-class person, I know we have a lot of, you know, people that aren't quite as good, we have a lot of people that are higher. For the city as a whole, if the other options will put us, well, we pay back our grandkids because when you look at the 15, 20 million at the end of the period, that's additional on top of everything we're doing. So if we bite the bullet, and I live in an HOA, been on, we have three, you know, I mentioned this to you before, we have three boards there, couple of the boards, we have the same issue with the water. Couple of boards have raised their dues, you know, bite the bullet, one of them has it. Big increase, everybody had to pay it, everybody goes crazy. You've got 30,000 people in the city, there's nobody here tonight. I don't know how many people watching TV. Five or 10. This is the most important thing, as one who's looked at this, and you'll make the decision, option one, 21%, you'll get it in the bill, depending on the pipe size. And I mean, I'm not a liberal guy, as you know, I'm a pretty conservative, but looking with fairness, the poor, the middle, the rich, I think it's the only way to go. And I don't know if the staff has that presentation of the different half sizes, but believe you me, it's, I think it's fair. And on, and on the second part of that, I think was the, what, the trash? No, the, when's the water, what's the stormwater, whatever? The increase, it came out to be fair to everybody. I mean, in this day and age of equality, inequality, racialness, all this, and you've got a tough job and you're a good board here, you might not have all the facts and these guys are good. Number one option, the only way to go, in my opinion. I'll pay the piper, all of us that live here are going to have to pay the piper no matter what, but I think that's the fairest, squarest way to go, based on the home pipes office. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Let me just double check that there's no callers. I do not see any callers online either. So we'll close the public input portion of the hearing and we will turn it back over to council. I think, you know, we had, we had enough time to go over questions so we can kind of get into a discussion. And as we discuss sort of which path we, we hope, we hope to take, if any questions do arise, staff, staff is of course available. What are, what are our thoughts? Because I can start if you want. Counselor Walton?
I was just looking back, I've referred to this several times over the last couple of years, the conversation at the beginning of September 2021, where I had the opportunity and I think staff met with each of us individually to talk about water. And, you know, a lot of this I was familiar with, but it really came in a new context. I, I haven't as much since COVID times popped into the Public Works Director's office. So Jeff may have not gotten this question as many times as our previous Public Works Director, but I would come in and say, is everyone's toilet flushing? And we'd get a chuckle, yep. And now it's, when I, when I viewed it the last couple of years through the context of what I assumed the position we were in water and what I've come to realize the last couple of years, and as you've built this case in the presentation to the decision we have tonight, I just, it, it's crazy for me to think about if I ever walked in and the answer was ever no, people's toilets aren't flushing. That is not a council I want to sit on. So I just, I encourage the opportunity tonight for us to be bold with this decision. It's not easy, no matter what, whatever way we go. But I, when I look at this and the notes of sort of, at the end of the conversation, sort of all the things that staff had lined up to work on, what the options work out to be, I mean, it really is kind of checking the box on all of the things. And so I just want to acknowledge the work that we've done, how staff has brought us along in the community, along in the conversation to, you know, recognize that the decision we are making tonight really is built on, you know, quite a bit of work that, where we've done to increase the, in lieu of the, adopt the tier structure and, and the other sensitivities that we've had through every discussion along the way in terms of equity and the sensitivity to those on a fixed income or those that will be challenged with any kind of increase. So that's kind of my first thought.
Thank you. If counsel wouldn't mind, I'd like to go next. So in my opinion, I, I think that it is the most financially responsible decision to go with our base case, which is a 21% increase over the next two years, to get us into that green area as quickly as possible. Now, we're not 100% certain if we'll be at 5% in 2026, but we know we can get there a lot closer than we can with any other option. And I think, I feel comfortable saying this, and I hope that you all believe in me when I say this, because Counsel Barnes and I are both up for reelection and I'll still say this is the best thing to do because we have to look at not only what's in the best interest of the short term, but the long term as well. Not just what's in the best interest of the current 32,000 residents, but the future 50,000, and not just this current council, but the future council as well. And we don't want to be that, be that council that looks back and say, ah, why did they do that to us, just like we're thinking about past councils as, as we see all these infrastructure projects come online. We don't want to do that to future councils, councils. Now, in addition to being supportive of the plan, I think it's extremely important that we follow through with the combination of our conservation programs as well as our financial assistance options that were presented earlier today. Should we, I'm, I'm in full support of allocating that additional 50,000 to support Sister Carmen, but in addition to Sister Carmen internally as well, right? Have the resources available within the City Hall where people can come and seek assistance through multiple channels. And finally, people are going to be surprised by this. 85% of people have no idea that this is going on right now, have no idea that we've been talking about this for years. They are going to be completely blindsided when they open up those bills. So we need to triple down on our communication efforts. I'll knock on every door in the city like I have in the past to make sure, and I, I know council is in support of, will do, will do the exact same. And so we need to make sure that as, you know, if we do move forward with this option, that we are, we are making sure people are aware it's happening so there is no sticker shock, so that they know that the resources are available, where can we go? Where, where are the exact links? Who are the right people we need to speak to? Specific names, specific titles from specific groups, as clear as possible. And that will make me feel a little bit better about making this decision in addition to what I, what I've stated before. And if council feels like we should go a different path, I'm, I'm open to a discussion as well, but I just think it's, it is the responsible thing for us to do is to stick with, with the base plan provided. Counselor Sampson?
I don't think 21% is going to drop. I think every year, the EPA is going to put more regulations and so is CDPE. So I think we're, when I look at this, I, I don't see that. I also hear the Public Works Director saying how much he wants to build other facilities. So I don't think 21% is ever going to go down. I think that's going to continue to be a request of council. I also think that the, we have to have a water assistance program that actually works. And I don't believe the current one at Sister Carmen works. Having listened to staff talk about how it is, having listened to people who try to go in and use the program. So if we decide that going with the 21% is the best, in the best interest of the community, we need to have a revamped water assistance program that puts in a credit that can be used over multiple months so that people do not feel like they have to beg for one month or a half a month of assistance because that's not going to do it. We have to be aware that when people need help, and this is a housing cost, water is a housing cost, that when they need help, we need to be balanced on the other side. We can't just raise rates without understanding how to help those who truly cannot take on an increase in water and utilities and property taxes and anything, you know, that is, that is going to be way beyond a 3% cost of living increase.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if anyone would like to respond, but I, I do think that we should, if we do feel like what we have available in terms of our water financial assistance is not meeting the standards, that we should look for ways to be more innovative and supportive of our residents. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, I, I agree that a credit system would be much more realistic. And I'm, I'm curious if the summer months would be where it would be more important to have that as an option than the whole year. I don't know that those details are necessary to discuss them right now. But I, I'm kind of stuck on that 21% is not going down and CDPE bring, we've, I mean, we have incredible analysis. What would, how, how could we come up with 21% is never going to go down? I don't, I don't follow how that's possible. What would?
I've just, that, this is my experience as a staff member who has written grants to try to help other cities come up with ways to address the increasing regulations on a regular basis. So it's my personal experience, having watched this over a number of years, where regulations from, whether it's the EPA or CDPE that come in and say, when you got to take the water out, you have to return it back 2% or two times as clean as you took it out.
That's already baked in though. Or you're saying, using that as an example, another big thing like that you think might come?
Yes. I mean, just watching what's going on with the issues with water happening at the Colorado River, the things that are, when this comes to, when water comes to a case, you have your water, your legal water issues with that, that could add more to the whole mix of things. So I'm, but what I've seen over the years is that the, the increases needed for an enterprise fund for water just continue on.
So you see, you see that 21% as being problematic and not coming down, but not coming down at all or not coming down to where the projections?
Yeah, I don't see it coming down to 5% in three years.
Okay. Thank you. And I did want to, I just want to invoke our sustainability efforts one, one more time. And I know conservation is not going to, it's not going to get, you know, water usage down, but we have a, I remember hearing in the 90s that the United States wastes more energy than the entire nation of Japan uses. So we have, we have a cultural energy use issue and the, the most wasteful per capita in the state was Boulder, Colorado. We have a whole bunch of computers that we leave on all the time. And I'm going to throw Incar into the bus because we had a supercomputer that was just running all the time. But per capita, we were using a massive amounts of energy. So culturally, we have the, a shift that we need to make in how much energy and water we use over time. It's, it's also known by itself going to save, it's not going to solve this problem. But I think we have areas where we can work on this. And I know, when I first started sitting in on the LISAC RAC, S RAC merger discussions, one of the projects was floatable tanks, putting solar panels that floated on Gusehaven reservoir. And they were just considering that idea. I also, I mean, there's ways that we might be able to address things over time if we really look hard at what, what could we possibly do? And I was just showing Counselor Walton that I just randomly Googled how much water evaporates from reservoirs versus lakes and streams, and it's more than twice as much water is evaporating from reservoirs than there is from lakes and streams globally. So it's too expensive right now to put covers over all those reservoirs, but it's one more thing we can think about in the future. How do we really lock down on how much water we're going to need? Because I, I don't, I don't know that we know a great deal about what's going to happen over the 10 years with water, but I think it's, I think we continue on the, the path that we are on and do what's necessary right now financially to be, to uphold our fiduciary responsibility, but at the same time. But at the same time, I think Sister Carmen, and if the systems don't work right now to support residents, that we work on those. And I know it's got to be super hard to ask for assistance, especially on a regular basis, when there's a lot of pride behind not having, you know, not having to do that. So I think we need to work really hard on how, I want to add that additional 50,000 if we can and find ways to make it more viable to use. And I'm trying to say this, but it's really hard to swallow that 21% increase. But if we could do all of the bits and pieces to support residents and looking at that $15 million, $14 and $15 million in extra cost in the future, I just can't, I don't think it's responsible to let that happen, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from others, so we can get to consensus on where to go. First, I think it's important for us to determine the path, the financial path we're going to take. And then after that, you know, what additions or changes we need to make in terms of financial assistance and water conservation, if we go a certain path. How do others feel?
I'm going to go 21%.
Okay, I'm hearing from Counselor Walton, she's in support of the base case.
I'm good with the 25% or 21%. Not 25.
He wants more. Okay, I hear from Mayor Potam in agreement as well. Any thoughts, Counselor Matrona?
It's hard for me to also go with the 21% just because I feel like it is a really big increase. I think, from like my perspective and like my neighborhood, like our yards aren't that big, and usually like the homes are smaller. So in general, I feel like the water usage isn't super high. So I feel like it's more manageable than maybe like the larger homes that have bigger yards and things like that. But I agree with what everybody has said about the financial assistance. I think it might be hard to develop a plan or come up with something that actually works. I think it's going to have to develop as time goes on, and kind of figuring out like, okay, how, what's working this month, or what do we feel like we're missing? And so I think just committing to like adapting and being flexible with what our residents need and making quick changes, I think is really important for staff to recognize that we can't just like set one plan and then stick to it. I think we need to be flexible, because that's the way that we're going to be able to help residents adjust to this increase, so.
Support it as well. Okay. Counselor Sampson, you as well? There, any thoughts?
No more.
All right. Well, I'm looking, looking like we have, do have a clear consensus to move forward with our base case. And I feel like unless there are any other objections, we also have a consensus to invest more in our financial assistance program, up to $50,000 that you have recommended there. And then in addition to supporting our nonprofits, we'd like to see some internal support as well for our residents. And then making sure the residents are aware of this as quickly as possible and as widespread as possible as well.
So can we, I get clarification. So are we saying the staff recommendation of $50,000 gets added to Sister Carmen, and then we're looking at an internal program? Or the internal program is part of the 50,000, or the 50,000 is invested to Sister Carmen, and then over time by next year, we'll have an internal program? I just want to make sure I'm clear to understand, and maybe give staff direction.
So what I'm seeing, and feel free for clarification, is that 50,000 will go into an eight-week grace period as well? Like that'll factor into the cost of that, the investment in Sister Carmen? I want, I would like to hear clarification from staff.
Yeah, what would actually be beneficial is, there's several communities that have the in-house kind of assistance program. If staff could evaluate some of those programs and come back to you to best kind of understand how to split up that money. There's a few other opportunities where we could repurpose some funding from existing programs to sort of try to pilot this up to next year. But if we could have just a few, a little bit of time. The 50,000 will get us something at least, though, to repurpose.
Counselor Sampson.
I'm just going to clarify for you. When you put your 50,000 in, it's for a subsidy on the water bill itself. So the idea is the credit, whether or not somebody shows up at Sister Carmen or up at our counter to fill out an application, the credit is still on the bill. So it essentially stays here in the city. Does that make sense? The credit's on the individual's bill. So when you're putting $50,000 out there, you're not saying, here, let me go give you 50,000.
It stays within our system.
It stays within our system. So I think some of the questions you have, your options, it doesn't really matter. It's because the money's going towards the bill, a credit towards the bill.
Right, I get that. And I was just trying to get clarity to understand where the 50,000.
How is it going to be split?
So that's all, that was my only thing. Because if we're looking at, looking at potential internal mechanisms, I think again, I've already done some Googling, looked at neighboring communities. There's a lot of options that could be done. And I'll leave that to staff, but I'll just end there.
Counselor Walton.
I also want to just clarify, this is a $50,000 increase from the enterprise fund, the Water Enterprise Fund, separate from the $25,000 that is an additional, separate line item in the budget.
Yes, and to clarify, the 50,000 is not coming from the enterprise fund. We cannot do that, so it's coming in general. So that Economic Development Incentive Program that I am recommending, we repurpose at least.
Well, I thought the 7,500, and then I think it's gone up a little bit this last year, whatever. That's always come from the enterprise fund, I thought.
7,500 is, but that's kind of a nominal amount when you're talking 50,000.
Okay. And so, but that would be in addition to, and separate from the 25,000. This 50,000 would be dedicated to this water program.
Okay. I think that is all we have for this part of discussion. Did you have another slide?
I just have motion language or any other general questions.
Why, thanks?
All right, well, yeah. Well, then we do have.
My watch is ready to move.
The watch is ready to move on. All right, so we do have two, two recommended motions, one for a resolution, one for an ordinance. So we first have our resolution available. Who would like to read this one? Mayor Potam.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2023-49, adopting the 2024 budget and establishing the Mill levy.
You have a motion of a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Next, we have our ordinance.
I move to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 19, Series 2023, appropriating funds for the 2024 budget.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
Do you guys want to, council want to move, keep trekking along, or do you want to take a five?
Let's get five.
I need a stretch.
All right, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back. 21%.
Oh my God, I'm sorry.
So we will be moving forward with our regular business to item L. This is resolution number 2023-JAS-50, declaring a vacancy on the city council. So as discussed at our previous meeting, we do have a vacancy on our council. And because of the timing of the vacancy and because of the timing of the election, we're in a very unique situation where we need to officially declare a vacancy, which council plans on doing tonight. And then from that point, from today, we'll have 45 days to fill that vacancy. And within that 45 days, there's a series of an application process, which will have some deadlines as well that I hope we can discuss and make clear to the public. And I just want to make sure, I know at our previous meeting, we did have that beautiful timeline in front of us. I don't see that now, but does anyone have that available? Or can I defer to our city attorney to clearly lay out that timeline for the benefit of the public?
Well, the first one is three days after the vacancy is announced that we have to have the application, we have to start accepting applications.
Correct, okay.
And then on the back, on the back of this, it actually talks about it in the code. Then basically, the deadline for accepting applications is 14 days after the date of the notice, unless council sets a shorter or longer time in the resolution declaring the vacancy. So we can increase that. And then the rest of the time, then after they come back, within two working days after the application deadline, the city clerk will post copies of all applications received by the deadline on the city's website. So that's all prescribed in here, as well as, and these don't have dates, council will decide at a later or regular, another special meeting, which applicants for the vacant office it desires to interview. And then from their following interviews, but before appointment, the council will hold at least one public input session to allow comments from the general public.
Right, so I think it's important for us to lay out, set those dates in stone tonight, and then be clear on exactly how the application process will look for potential candidates. And so I'm going to go to our city attorney. Do you have those specific dates that we can kind of put out there and see if council wants to make any changes?
I have a few of them, and I also want to give credit to the city clerk for preparing the calendar.
Should we pass this?
Thank you, Clerk Beck. So the intention based on how long?
Excuse me, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Counselor Walton, did you have a suggestion?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we take action and then we, and then based on if it passes, then we set dates.
However, council wants to do?
No, because it says here on number four, section 5.5, be number four. If, if we're setting a deadline for the applications, we have to do it within the resolution.
That is correct. If you're going to do something other than 14 days.
The 14 days.
I did write the resolution for the 14 days.
Okay, so let's.
But if you want to change it, you could amend the resolution.
That's fine, go ahead, city attorney.
So I'd like to ask, that's not 14 business days, it's just general 14 days?
In this case, it is 14 calendar days.
Okay, thank you.
So it's intended to be exactly weeks after the date that the notice is posted.
All right, let's, let's be clear on the dates and the timeline of events. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so should you proceed with the 14 days, the ordinance provides that the city clerk will post the notice within three working days, which would be this Friday, after you declare the vacancy.
October 6th. Can you say the dates, please?
Yes, it would be October 6th.
October 7th or 6th, I apologize.
October 6th is this Friday. That would be when the clerk will post the notice of vacancy and the request for applications. So that, what that means is on this Friday, October 6th, that notice will go up along with an application that has everything you'd be getting from your applicants. That notice will also say when applications are due. If council does not change the 14 days, applications will be due on Friday, October 20th. Those applications will then be reviewed by the clerk and will be posted online on the city's website with personal contact information redacted on October 24th. So that will be the public's first opportunity to review the applications. And then after that, the next date for you to note, mayor and council, is that the appointment must be made by November 17th. Between October 24th, when the applications are posted online for everyone to see, and between November 17th, you will need to, at a meeting, decide which applicants you wish to interview, as well as when you will interview them, and provide an opportunity for the public to give input on the applicants that you interview, which could be at the same meeting they were interviewed at. And then you will also need to, at some point before the 17th, honor before the 17th, appoint to fill the vacancy. So there's a lot of dates that are still undetermined. And so that could be a topic of discussion at the October 17th meeting in terms of setting those dates. I know that your city administrator recruitment has additional dates in November you'll need to accommodate. So Clerk Beck could probably send the calendar you've prepared for the last meeting out to council to start to consider when and at which meetings you will.
So say that list of things we have to do again?
After applications are posted, you will need to decide which applicants to interview, and that requires a motion, you might hope. So the ordinance does say you will need to make a motion to determine which of the applicants you will interview, if not all of them. So either way, you need to make a motion deciding who you will interview. You will also need to, probably at a meeting after you decide who to interview, you will need to interview the applicants and provide an opportunity for public input. So those two things can happen at the same meeting. And then you will need to, this could also be at the same meeting, you could decide who to appoint. So again, the list of things is decide who to interview by motion, interview the applicants, receive public input on the applicants, and then select an applicant.
And that could be a regular meeting or a special meeting?
Yes.
Just for council's reference, the last two vacancies, from what I recall, we did everything on the same day. Doing, conducting the interviews, having a portion of public comment, and making the selection, we did them all on the same day, and it was a special meeting.
It wasn't a special meeting.
It was.
It was.
It was. Which I.
So one of the difficulties, council, is if you keep the 14 days for applications, looking at your meeting schedule, that is after the next meeting. The applications would not be due or available to the public until after the next meeting. So you would not be able to select who to interview.
So on the 6th, we could?
On the 6th, you could. And then you'd have to have a meeting after the 6th where the applicants you're interviewing could come and do, and go through the rest of the process. And that could be on, well, that couldn't be on the 21st. It has to be on or before the 17th. So that's where, between the 6th and the 17th, you probably have to have a special meeting or combine that with another special meeting. Mayor, you'd be calling for others.
Yeah, I think, I think that, yeah, I think that's the biggest decision we need to make is how long the written application should be put out there, keeping in mind our only other meeting in October is the 17th. Go ahead, Counselor Walton.
Well, I'm thinking, since we have, since we have the time, and if, and I, starting kind of with the end in mind, I guess, an election day on the 7th, I think it would be wise to schedule the interviews and the decision after election day.
In between election day and the 17th?
Yeah, so sometime between the 8th and the 17th. And so then if we make our determination on who, who we are selecting for interviews at our meeting on the 6th, if then, maybe we have the time, it seems to me, to extend the application period by one week.
If we make the application deadline the 27th.
And then they would be posted on the 31st.
Right, and then they're posted on the 31st. We make selections at our regularly scheduled meeting on the 6th. And then at sometime between the 7th and the 17th, we, maybe at our next meeting, we can kind of see what the, what date we want to select. We'll have to do a special meeting, I think, for those interviews.
Right. That sounds good to me. Post, post applications this Friday, the 6th. Have them due on the, did you say the 27th?
27th.
Have, have them due on the 27th. Have them posted on October 31st. Have, have a week to review it. Have, at our November 6th meeting, which is a Monday, we will make a decision on who to interview. Then we will need to, probably at our November 6th meeting, also make a decision on when to host that special meeting. We could do it earlier. But we do, from the, from November 6th through November 17th, we need to have a special meeting to determine, to interview and make a decision.
I think we need to make the decision on what date that is now.
I'm okay with that. So we, so election day is the 7th, right?
Yes, we're not doing it then.
I know, yes, we're obviously not going to do it then. And, you know, the 8th might be too quick of a turnaround as well. So, you know, our options are probably Thursday, the 9th, Monday, or Friday, the 10th, the following week, 13th, the Monday, you know, or the following week, so.
I think that, yeah, the 13th or the 14th, I think makes the most sense.
I think the 14th makes the most sense because it is a Tuesday. We generally have our Tuesdays available. November 14th.
Yeah, it's about the only day I have open.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's go ahead and do that then. November 14th, we will conduct the interviews. We will have our public input process after the interviews. We will make a selection that night.
Is there? There's not. We don't have a city administrator thing.
Oh, like an SGR meeting?
Yeah.
That is the time period where, so we don't have a meeting on the 27th. We are supposed to receive information on the 31st, but that just comes to the city. But the start of any type of the interviews for that could start in November, we had said at that time, so.
But those dates have yet to be determined.
Correct.
I think we'll establish those at our next meeting on the 17th in our second session.
Okay, so the, so it could be overlapping with something going on or we'll plan around it.
We'll just let SGR know about these dates and we'll work around those dates. I mean, it's kind of a mess, we got to fill, like, you know, a few positions all at once.
And then does council have any reason you might want to wait until after election day to decide who to interview, or does that, is that anything you want to consider? Right now, you have, we have, have you deciding on the 6th?
I don't think so. I mean, I mean, we could decide who the, who to interview, and then those individuals, like, let's say they are elected, if they apply, then they can decline the interview.
Okay.
Yeah, that would require a special, another, a second special meeting. And the only way that that might work out is if we have a city administrator meeting. So that's kind of, I was wondering where those were falling. But we don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so council would like to extend the application deadline to the 27th. When you make your motion on the resolution, if the movement counselor could just state that paragraph three of the resolution would be amended to have applications due 21 days. Or you can just say on October, what was it, October 27th?
Okay. Who feels confident to make this motion?
I do. I move to approve resolution number 2023-50 with the amendment of paragraph three to have the applications due on the 27th of October and declaring the vacancy on the city council.
Okay, we have a motion. Take a second, please.
Can we vote no? I don't want to have a vacancy.
Okay, sure, I mean, well, it's your, it's your life, you can vote however you want. Do we have a second, please, on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, that passes.
You're two opposing?
No, as in they are none, no, no opposition, okay. That motion passes unanimously. Are we, are we clear on that, city attorney?
I, I believe so. So did council want us to prepare, staff to prepare a motion for your next meeting to call a special meeting on November 14th for this purpose? Or did you want to wait until you have your other dates figured out?
November.
That would be for the interviews, public input and selection of someone?
No, yeah, no, we can, we can do that as soon, as soon as we need to, because we, we know we're, we're meeting on the 14th.
All right, so we'll go ahead and make that happen on the 14th.
Yeah, that's happening.
That'll be on the next agenda. All right, I think we've got everything we need. Thank you, council.
All right.
And then will this be, will this be communicated on the city council?
It will be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get as many applicants as possible. You know, we, we encourage everyone, anyone to apply, including the folks running for office. Anyone that's interested, please, please apply. Thank you. All right. Let's move forward with council appointments. We have item M, this is appointments to the library board, Counselor Matrano.
Yeah, so tonight Denise Walker and Autumn Worrington will be appointed as alternate members. So I motion to appoint Denise Walker and Autumn, Autumn Worrington as alternate members of the library board for a term of three years.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you, it looks like. This Walker's getting more involved, that's great. Next, we have appointment to our senior advisory board.
So the senior advisory board is excited to have a new application and sending this recommendation forward for the approval to council for Angela McLean to the senior advisory board to be a member with her term ending. Oh, she's, sorry, she's filling a vacancy. So it actually would end this year, I didn't realize that was a vacancy. So move to approve Angela McLean to the senior advisory board to fill vacancy term ending December 31st, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Sampson.
I'm wondering if counsel, Counselor Walton could explain what's going on in terms of, we're supposed to talk about the senior advisory board, and that's coming up? And how does this relate to that?
Sure. So I haven't had a chance to update you all since our, since I met with staff and we put a plan in place based on our conversation at our workshop. So I'm happy to give you an update. So at the October 23rd workshop, it's planned for an agenda item to have a set of presentations from the state, county, and local level to give council an update on seniors and then kind of talk through a series of questions for discussion for council just in terms of how we are prioritizing seniors, where there are gaps in decision-making that we may have or need in support and advocacy of seniors, and what we feel like we may or may not need from an advisory group to, to support seniors in Lafayette. So, so that's coming soon. And the presenters will be from Dr. Cog AAA to talk about the trends in aging in older adults. And another speaker will be from Boulder County AAA to talk about the, I think it's, it's called the Aging, Aging Well Report Assessment. Aging Well Assessment, I think is what it's called. So it's kind of some localized information. And then the Lafayette senior center staff will give a quick update on the mission and the programs and what gaps they're seeing in services that, you know, kind of people that are walking in the door and the kinds of things that, that they are finding to be a challenge. So, so that's the game plan. So coming soon. I, what I, what I'd like to do too is, you know, kind of, I guess, have sort of that higher level conversation, knowing that we kind of are putting a pin in the, the actual, you know, conversation of is senior advisory board, you know, do we need that, like, kind of first things first a little bit, so kind of a broader picture. I, I've been taking a look at the comprehensive plan of, you know, certain strategies that, that actually mention older adults, and so I'll sort of have that summary for you as well. And then also, we have a pin kind of holding, unfolding place in the bylaws that the senior advisory board has drafted and has recommended to council on some, on many functions that, of, of activity that they're not. On some, on many functions that, of, of activity that they're not doing and that they don't think is appropriate for them to continue to do. So, it's kind of an outdated, um, update that needs to happen. But I didn't want to bring that forward until we had this conversation, because it's kind of skinny down to a pretty, um, small amount of things. And so I want council, I just wanted to be able to facilitate a conversation so that council could weigh in on what kinds of things. You know, we maybe would, would continue to need, so that if there's anything we wanted to add to that, then it can be added and considered, um, at a future date.
So this candidate before us tonight is well aware of all of that and understands that. May get, if the person were appointed tonight, everything could change in a few weeks.
Well, and, and I, yeah, and I don't know how quickly any of that might happen, because I, I, I feel like, you know, another thing we maybe can talk about, depending on the discussion is. You know, is it something that, that then gets rolled into the conversations of boards and commissions at a future date with a future council? So that's a possibility too. But yes, to answer your question though, at the, at the September twelfth meeting, we had already had this, the, um, conversation with staff. So I was very, um, open with them on, you know, on what the considerations are. And I posed to them the questions that we were asked to pose to our boards and commissions, just of, um, you know, are you. Are you a viable, viable, relevant, um, board, and what do you need from council? And so I have a recap that I can share with you on, on the, um, you know, notes that I wrote down from them. But essentially, yes, their point of view is that they are a viable board. In a nutshell, and, you know, just in terms of this particular consideration that's on the agenda tonight. I mean, it's still a functioning group, and so of course I would encourage, um. Approving the appointment.
So it looks like this term is set to expire at the end of this year, so it wouldn't be for long. Either way, it'd only be for a couple months. So I think before we make any, so December thirty-first of this year, so if we make any decisions, I mean. I don't, I don't know if it's that big of a deal for this specific appointment. She's just ending, uh, ending of the year. Oh, sorry, Councilman.
Hang on, I just want, I was, I had a chance, wow, my hot. The microphone, not me. The, I had a chance to meet this person, and I, I don't know if he looked really through, um, resume and background, but I think if, if there ever was a person to bring in. Uh, I think this is that person, and if they understand, this person understands like what's at stake here, I think we can gain a great deal in a short amount of time. There's like, high value in making this appointment, so I'd like to see it. You know. Take, take what we have, when, when it's a good thing, and I think this is, I think this person would be really helpful. Even though, you know, the board might not continue, the input from this person would be really helpful right now.
All right, um, any other pieces of discussion? All right, so we do have a motion and a second on the floors, uh, for the appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wait, that passes unanimously, thank you. We are on to staff reports, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one, uh, item to follow up with you on, and another item that just came to my attention. Um, so for the first item, I wanted to follow up with council regarding, uh, confidential email. You received a couple of weeks ago from me with information from the city's special counsel for oil and gas standards, Elizabeth Peronius. Uh, regarding whether the city would like to participate as a party in an, in, in administrative action. Regarding a pending application at the Energy and Carbon, the Colorado Energy and Carbon Energy and Commission, or the UCMC. And so I would like to ask you tonight, based on the information you received a couple of weeks ago. If council has any desire to join in that action. My understanding is that Boulder County will also be, uh, participating as a party, and so we would be joining with Boulder County in that action. If you're not prepared to make that decision tonight, uh, or if you have any questions, um. I could check with Ms. Peronius to see if we could put that off until the next meeting, but if you're prepared tonight, I'll take that direction.
Thank you. So, uh, I guess the first question is, council prepared to make a decision tonight, and if so, are we?
There is information on the day, as there is a bad side, in case you didn't notice, so. This all came before, uh, a couple of weeks ago, so I understand if council didn't have a chance to look at that.
All right, uh, thoughts, questions, recommendations?
I'm good.
Yeah, I, I'm okay.
With, to join?
To join, just, uh, the county's effort.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, so I see consensus, okay.
Great, thank you.
I will let Ms. Peronius know, uh, the other item that just came to my attention, Clerk Beck just informed me that. LURA, the Lafayette Urban Renewal Authority, meets on November fourteenth, and they are televised, um, here in the chamber. So that would be a conflict with, uh, the potential council vacancy interdate that we just discussed a few moments ago. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention. There is a possibility that LURA could reschedule its meeting, or council, you could. Open discussion back up for whether they'd like to look at another date that week. Sorry that we didn't know that.
And so we can't meet in library because we're both televised?
You'd both be televised, right?
So, we can't do split screen?
Unless you could, and I guess. Not knowing what's on their agenda, I don't know if you could even stagger the meetings.
Uh, well, we could, yeah, ask Director Keating and get back to you in the next day or so, to figure out what's on their docket, because I'm not entirely clear either. So you don't have to make a.
Let's, let's do that. Let's ask, find out from Director Keating what's going on in Laura, and then we can. Make a determination. We have another meeting. Let's just.
Okay.
Let's just wait and see, and then it will.
What's our backup?
Uh, we could do any date that week, the thirteenth, the fifteenth, the sixteenth.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. What's the backup for people?
Oh, I think, you know, if we had to choose, like, I don't think we should force LURA to change their meeting. I mean, we just made that decision right now. We can easily move it. We can move it to the thirteenth or the fifteenth.
Well, let's do the thirteen.
Like, we could do Monday, the thirteenth.
That's fine.
That's fine. Do LURA meetings start at five-thirty? I think they do.
I want to open up the.
Uh, Council Sampson.
I was trying to open up our website to see if there's any other.
Yeah, I mean.
Conflicts.
The library board, but that's not.
They're not televised. It's only us, Planning Commission, and.
On the thirteenth.
So, November thirteenth, so do we have to make a new motion?
Uh, I don't think you need a motion. I think you just, if there's consensus, we will include a motion in your packet for October seventeenth.
Got it, okay.
Thirteenth it is, council?
The thirteenth.
Good catch, Clerk Beck.
Thank you very much.
All right, is that all, City Attorney?
That is, that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, let's go to our city administrator.
All right, we're pulling it up. We've got a lot of good things going on. Okay, so, um. Onto the next slide, so that, um, kind of bottom right corner, um, we're really excited that we just recently launched. Um, an interactive map of our public art collection, and so that bottom left is a screenshot of the website along with the website that you can go to. Um, it was a really great collaboration between our public art coordinator, Stacy Bernstein, and our GIS developer, Melissa Slater. And it's, um, available and really also can create a virtual tour for those that want to see it. So really kind of neat program utilizing our GIS system. Um, continuing on with GIS, because as we mentioned in the budget process, uh, they have been busy at work. We are now, um, at least, I would say about eighty percent implemented with our asset management implementation. You can see up top, those are the assets that we have entered. I think there's over thirty thousand of them right now, between water pipes, stop signs. Roads, et cetera. Um, if you recall, prior to the cyber attack, we had very limited system and contracted out a lot of our GIS. Um, and so having a robust asset management system that can do work orders, um, it, it, um. Sorry, integrates with our work order system and our, our GIS, um, is really going to help crews out in the field. And, um, really help with a lot of that, like. Preventative maintenance and all of that. So again, kudos to the team, Callie Hayden, um, with our public works operations. And Melissa Slater really liked this effort, but it's been cross-departmental and are, um, excited to get our Parks and Recreation Department integrated in there. Um, as the next step. And then, since it's fall, our Parks Recreation and Open Space is busy doing capital projects now that we're out of the, kind of thick of it. So, in the twenty-twenty-three budget, you approved, um, converting the, um, range to artificial turf. And they are, um, doing earth moving, if anyone's been out there, and final grading of the project, and it should be completed in November. Um, we're also really excited that we now have a new, um, HVAC unit in the senior center. For those that have been there, it was. Manually activated, noisy and inefficient swamp cooler, essentially, and so this will really allow the senior center to be a cooling center. For vulnerable populations in the summertime as well. And then, um, finally, the Great Outdoors Water Park Lap Pool. We were, we poured concrete on it to, um, really stabilize it. It was a part of the bond proceeds. So this really helps from any of the water leakage, um, and really makes it more of a lasting amenity. Um, moving on, our climate action plan, residents have received a, um, postcard in the mail. And the survey is open for the entire month of October, so, uh, we encourage people to fill out that survey. But also learn more about their engagement opportunities, um, on the webpage. And then, uh, just a few updates on the South Boulder Road, um, that big traffic switch that we had been anticipating by the end of September. Occurred on, uh, September twenty-ninth. It switched from Avalon to approximately, um, a hundred and fifty feet. West of a hundred and twentieth street. Um, and so the intersection's about four to six weeks from being switched, and construction on the inlets on a hundred and twentieth. Section is occurring this week, so we are still, um, moving forward and on track, which is great, and work at Lamont Dose has been completed as well. And then one thing that I just got late today that I wasn't able to add, but I think would be very interesting and we'll do some publicity about, is that beginning Monday. Uh, the Cold Creek Meals on Wheels will be utilizing the library's lobby, Monday through Friday, eleven to twelve, to distribute prepackaged hot meals. And snack bags. They're available for any person, regardless of age, and one meal and a snack, uh, will be provided for the time being. And signage and promotion will be coming, but it's a great partnership that we have between the library and our Cold Creek Meals on Wheels.
Is that ongoing?
I think they're highlighting it, I'm not sure for how long. Um, finally, looking ahead, uh, we just touched on the second reading of the budget. We'll also be providing the winter mobility plan. Consideration of the twenty-twenty-two annual conference of financial report. This is, uh, rescheduled from our prior meeting that was shifted. And then consideration and first reading of the multi-mobile transportation plan. And then our October twenty-third wa- workshop will include the Urban Renewal Authority Transition Plan Discussion with our consultants. And as, um. We already discussed as well, a conversation around our senior advisory board. That's all I have tonight. Thank you all.
Right, yeah, thank you for those updates. Okay, we are now going to wrap up with council. Oh, I apologize, uh, we do have a subitem here, this is to select an interview panel for our planning commission appointment. So, we are fortunate enough to receive an applicant for the planning commission. Uh, and so, um, you know, council does need to put together an interview committee of, of, uh, three counselors here. Oh, sorry, were you going to jump in here?
No, you're doing a great job, so.
Well, I'll let you go ahead, yeah.
Is this one applicant or multiple?
Uh, we have one applicant, um, for a vacancy that, uh, expired back in the end of June. Um, and so we need three council members to form an interview committee, and, um, depending on schedules, we can schedule the. Um, interview with the applicant. As soon as the council is available to do so.
Lots of vacancies, so, I guess, yeah, um, we can determine a date once we have, uh, members of council, who is interested in participating in the interview. Counselor Barnes, Counselor Walton, we do need one more. If, if you, if you three are not available, then I can jump on, but want to give you preference. Priority.
Timeframe, are you talking in the next, like, two weeks?
I, ideally, we would like to get this done fairly quickly, given that there's a, a vacancy, but we're gonna, like, what I'm gonna do is pull the. The committee members and see when you're available, and then we'll move forward.
Do you two have pretty good availability in the next two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm fairly busy, so that's why I need to explain myself.
Oh, you're.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay, I just didn't know.
I just want to check and see. No, I am interested, but unfortunately, I've got a project.
Okay, and I guess.
Is there any reason we have to have three?
Oh, I feel like it's an odd number.
Yeah, the, the charter requires.
Okay.
It's in the charter, so, yeah, we're beholden to the constitution.
Great, beautiful, that's a better, that's a better reason. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and join that committee then. Um, and, on, along with Counselors Walton and Barnes.
Thank you all, and I will reach out to you to pull some times over the next few weeks.
They're flexible during the day.
During the day? He's got school.
I don't, but, I mean, not until, like.
All right, we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay, um, all right, so on to council reports now. Um, let's go with Council Sampson.
Uh, the meeting that we currently have scheduled with SGR on Friday, October thirteenth, we'd like to move. To Tuesday, October seventeenth. Do we need a motion to do that and a vote? Nope, you just need us to announce that we have chosen to move that to Tuesday, October seventeenth with SGR. Okay?
I don't know that you need a motion. I do think you need to just, uh, make it clear for the public that you'll no longer be holding a meeting on the thirteenth.
Yes. As stated, I will no longer be, we will no longer be holding the meeting on Friday, the thirteenth, because that's an odd number too. Thirteen.
Friday the thirteenth.
In October.
Yeah, yeah, in October. Um, this is National Voter Education Week. Um, and if anybody is interested in changing their voter registration or even registering to vote. This is a great opportunity to do so. Um, get ahold of the Boulder County Clerk and Recorder's Office. Um, they are currently at seventeen-five-five South Public Road, that's a new building. Um, if you're trying to update your registration, you can also register online by email or mail. Um, so there are several options. Um, I wanted to do a quick report out and a question. Um, I am, I am taking on, because I'm the liaison for the Lafayette Arts Commission. And the Public Art Committee, um, I'm looking at the city code for the Cultural Arts Commission. Um, what I look at is whether or not it's productive, and in order to continue to be effective. What are some of the, uh, minor refinements that need to happen, um, to do that? Uh, but I had a question, because somewhere in the last year, we discussed the possibility of changing alternates. On boards, commissions, and committees to voting members. If I'm recalling correctly, at the time we've learned, each one of the liaisons asked our boards, commissions, and committees. And we learned that two to three of the boards, commissions, and committees wanted to keep that the same. And the others, um, either wanted to change that or felt that they didn't have, um, they didn't really feel strongly either way. So, we left that discussion, and I was wondering, how does council feel about. Individual boards, commissions, and committees changing their code or, or recommending. A change to the code, their particular code, um, to, uh, transition. The two alternates to voting members. So doing it on an individual base versus across the board.
And, so, in our code, this would be different, depending on the board, like, so, I mean. We could, we could, I'm just wondering if we could legally do it individually, right? As opposed to, um, like, if we do it, I just want to make sure if we take one action, it's not all encompassing, right?
Yeah, so the statement, um, that it says is council may appoint two alternates to. Whatever it is, the board, commission, committee. So, there's that statement in there, and it falls under, I think, a- a- and I can't be for sure that it falls under. Every board, commission, and committee, but I do know it falls under most. So the question would be whether or not, is there two alternates on, um, ASRAK? Okay. Um, so the question is, just what you had said, Mayor.
Like, is, yeah, well.
Is it something that council? Is it something that council would like to allow each board, commission, and committee to decide?
Go ahead.
So when it came to whether boards and commissions would have alternates, I thought we had agreed that each group could decide on their own. So is your quest, is that your question, or is your question?
That's our request.
That's my question.
Whether or not they can, or whether or not they can increase their membership?
No, so they would, they would transition their two alternates and have those two alternates become voting members thereby increasing the total, well, I mean, their membership is still the same amount, but increasing their voting members by two.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the question.
It's a good question. Counselor Barnes, did you?
Oh, I thought that we said that was okay. That's what I thought. Was the understanding that we were going to say that a board, that they couldn't do that.
I didn't remember that we said, though, that you could increase your membership.
Voting membership?
Yeah. That was, that was why I was asking that, the technicality of that question.
I'm, I'm supportive of that. I just want to make sure, I just want to know how we do it and to make sure.
And is it a matter of changing the bylaws?
So you wouldn't have any alternates?
It's a matter of changing the code. So where you have alternates in the code, you'd have to change the code to either.
Not the charter.
Remove alternates or increase the membership. So it would be an ordinance.
Within the code, isn't the code just generally referring to boards and commission, right? It doesn't specifically break out.
Each board has their own.
Okay, that makes it easier. That's what I wanted to, that's, that was my question.
The only thing that overarching is our rule on allowing for remote participation in meetings. That actually is an overarching code for all boards.
Right. So it'll say for, just like, general example, say, a library board, 10 members, two alternates, open space, six members, two alternates.
So do we have, does it vary all over the place for all these?
Most there, when a lot, a lot of the boards are created in about the same tenure period, and so a lot of them have the same membership provisions, and most, if not all of those, had alternates. I don't know of any boards created in the last 15 years that did not have alternates. There might be one or two preceding that time period that don't. I couldn't name it off the top of my head. I think there's one or two that don't.
So what, how many people are on the board now?
On the Cultural Arts Commission, there are seven plus. It states, city council may, upon recommendation of the commission, appoint up to two alternate members, which members shall be called upon to serve and vote in the absence of a regular member.
So what's, why does the group want to go from seven to nine?
They want everybody to be able to vote.
So you're, so?
That's the point. It's strictly about, alternates are non-voting members. They believe that anybody that is appointed to their commission should have the ability to vote.
So why not just keep it at seven? And then over time. But over time, either their, their term would expire and they'd roll off or.
Are you recommending that based off like quorum and like filling vacancies?
No, I, no, my, I guess my question is, why go from seven to nine? Is it, is it because the people, there are nine people that right now are really active? Because like, I just don't understand why, if they would.
Yes, there are nine people right now, which includes seven voting members and two alternates. They prefer not to kick off the alternates. They'd like to keep them on.
And on top of that, I think, because I was the liaison to LCAC for a while, is that it was, they have learned to have a number of people to sit on review committees for the community grant and the other grant, I forget what it is. But I think moving from nine to seven, with everybody being voters, minimizes the number of people that they have available to accomplish the task that the commission has in front of them. So I think they would, my understanding is that they would, they benefit from having nine people available. And as an equity piece, if you're spending your time, if you're taking time to be there, but you can't vote, why?
Yep.
And a lot of, some of the other boards and commissions said that they, they had alternates who appreciated the option of being alternates because they couldn't make every, every meeting. So that's why there was variance in there. And I, I think nine, I understand the question, like, why would you go, why would you have nine? Isn't seven enough?
Yeah, kind of taking the people and their enthusiasm out of the picture. You know, we have other boards and commissions that are struggling to even get seven or whatever the minimum.
Right. And I think nine was for that one's particular commission, nine was critical.
Counselor Simpson's suggesting, let's do it on a board, a case by case basis. So it's, it's not a blanket kind of proposal that we're doing. It's just, if boards are struggling, then they don't have to do it. So I think she's looking for support to see if we can allow each individual board to decide for themselves by, I guess, now amending the, the code for their specific, you know, section to allow them to move alternates to full-time positions, which I feel like I'm in support of. Our homework would just be to go to our boards as liaisons and ask them if they want to join in on that effort.
Yeah. If and when that works for your boards. I was just asked by LCAC.
Right.
If that was even something that council would consider.
And again, yeah, I mean, the only constitution I have, which is a minor thing, is if, you know, if there's any reason that, you know, let's say 10 years from now, there's not a lot of enthusiasm, and now they've got this flow, you've got to have nine. You need to have nine people. Like, I mean, I guess if they don't have nine, they don't have nine. They just function with four or five or whatever, however many people they can get, right? I mean, does that the?
Does it, does it matter?
I was going to say, if that's the issue, we certainly, I can take that to them and tell them you're interested in putting in a range.
Well, what I think is, so I guess I want to get a better understanding of this. So alternates are, they're, so alternates are currently part of the nine, but they're not part of quorum, or are they part of quorum?
Right, they're not part of quorum.
They're not a part of.
Unless somebody doesn't show.
Right. Well, what I'm just saying is like, is quorum out of seven? So they need at least four members? Or is quorum out of nine? So then at least five?
Out of seven.
It's out of seven. And if we were at two, then it would be out of five. So I guess, yeah, that is, that is a reasonable downside to it.
Well, there's a, in the code, it also says that if you have an open seat, you have 30 days to fill that. And some of the boards.
As soon as possible. Some of them just say as soon as possible.
Hold on. My understanding is different than yours. Senior Advisory Board has four, four members. If there's two.
You don't have enough to have a meeting.
No, you do, yeah.
We have to have at least.
Based on, so it's based on the membership that you have at that time is to base quorum on. It's not based on the number, the maximum number you could have.
Okay. Sorry.
So the definition of quorum is now called into question.
Yeah. Go ahead, City Senator.
So our standard form bylaws, which these, which LCAC has adopted, and so have the rest of advisory boards and commissions, says that a majority of the voting members of the board in office shall constitute a quorum. So if there's nine, five is a quorum. If there's seven, four, and so on. So it has to be a majority, which means more than 50%. What's that?
A majority of the current membership.
In that day of. Well, no, a total in office. So, yeah, on that day. Yes. So if you have vacancies, those don't count towards the total membership. So then you'd calculate the quorum.
Okay, so we'll just be able, when we, when we go to our boards and commissions, let's express that, here are the pros and cons of this decision. Let them decide for themselves if they're willing to take that on.
We don't need it. Why do I, we all have to go have a conversation with them again?
Oh, you don't have to. I'm just saying, like, if you'd like to present them. We already kind of did that, but just now that we're moving forward with it, if you want to check in with them, you can, to see if they want to join LCAC in this. But it's up to you, if you're in charge.
Any group can update their bylaws anytime.
That has nothing to do with the bylaws. This has to do with the code.
Well, I guess.
And the bylaws can't override the code. The code is sets. So that's why I ask.
Okay, so are we?
I guess that brings up another question. What's the difference?
We're letting them do it?
Yeah.
That's what.
Information that's in a bylaws or.
If you all are good, thank you. That was all my reports out. Thank you.
So, yeah, just making sure we're okay with this? Yes?
I haven't received any clear direction as council. Is there anything I need to do? Or is it just a?
I, it was a question to ask so I could go back to LCAC and let them know whether or not council was willing to consider it.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, all right.
We're not making any decisions at this point.
Okay.
Still in discussions.
Thank, all right. Well, thank you, Counselor Simpson. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Counselor Maggiano?
Eliac is holding the candidate forum tomorrow.
Woo-hoo!
Here, at 6:00 PM.
Come on, man!
It was.
Did he forget?
Oh!
Tomorrow.
I think they switched it. They switched.
They think legal.
No, no, no.
It's here now, right?
Eliac was, so I want to make sure that's clear, because I know Eliac was a little upset that the messaging is not correct. In certain places, people are saying that it's in the library. It's here in city council chambers.
Oh, the forum. Yes.
The candidate forum is here. I want to make sure that's clear and make sure, like, we're, we're consistent amongst all of our messaging to say that it is here, it's not at the library.
Oh.
It was originally planned for the library, but.
No, it's here. So you don't have 17.
That's it.
And the mayor report.
Thank you, Mayor Portem.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, a couple things. First of all, so I was thinking, and I was looking at and wanted to get everybody's opinion on, I was looking at potentially benches or however we want to do that, or something for, to honor former counselor or Briggs. And I noticed down at Metro State, because I was down there for the Sun Fest conference. Anyway, but they have picnic tables, kind of like the ones we have in front of the Starkey Building, but with solar panels that you can charge your mobile devices to. And I thought it would be kind of neat to look at something like that, something a little bit different than just the bench. But it could be like a table for conversation, but also allows people to like, charge their phones. And I just wanted to ask if people were interested in liking that idea, and also if people were comfortable with me moving that, that process forward. I guess it's a two-part question.
Thoughts on council? You know, I think definitely, I think this is, I'm super supportive in that, and I'm okay with you working with staff to make that happen.
I'm super supportive of that. The, I don't know if charging your phone at the bench is the.
Okay, but it was good. It was just an idea. I just thought it was the easiest thing ever. I was like, that's pretty cool.
That is cool, and I think on a different bench.
Yeah, but maybe, exactly. But that's fine. It's just, maybe it's just moving forward, and that's great feedback. I just was excited when I saw them. I'm like, wow.
Yeah, that is a cool feature.
But you're suggesting that maybe it's the healing bench?
Yeah.
More, yeah.
More confrontation.
And I, I think it would be, kind of diminish the intent if somebody was on their phone, sitting on the bench.
Yeah, that's fair.
So do we need to make a motion for something like that?
I think, I don't think we need to. Still investigating.
We're just.
Yeah, we're investigating.
Yeah, we're.
And then I think Mayor Portem will come back to us with, with, when it's like, kind of finalized.
And then one last thing is on, coming up in the middle of October, on the 14th and 16th, in our city, there's a lot going on when it comes to marching bands. So on the 14th, Monarch High School will be sponsoring 24 bands at their Monarch Fest, including the CU marching band. And that'll be happening, starting at like 1:00 and it goes until 8:00, 8:30. And again, that'll be with 22 competing bands from around the metro area. And then on Monday, the Centaurus Marching Band is sponsoring regionals before they go to state and two weeks after that. And for those of you who don't know, Centaurus was ranked number two in the state last year, and Monarch was ranked number four in state competition down at the Air Force Academy. And since this is a fundraising effort for both those bands, I was wondering if I could get city council to pay for the police coverage that's required by the Bandmasters Association. And I think it's around, I'm asking for no more than $500 per event, $1,000 total to.
Home contingency.
Home contingency, city council contingency.
Are we, are we okay with that? Supportive? Okay, looks like you have consensus.
Great, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Walton?
Thank you. I was wondering if on the Lafayette Listen's website, we could update the page for the city administrator recruitment process to expand the timeline and the dates of our meetings.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have those dates officially finalized at our October 17th meeting. So, I mean, would you like to do, do that now, or do you want to wait for after that, where it's a little bit more clear?
Just whatever updates we have, like, that can be made on the dates we know. Like, the October date isn't on here. The, there's a link to submit an application that's already closed. Just needs to, needs to stay refreshed.
What do you mean it's already closed?
Yeah, the.
Our application is so closed.
Right.
And we don't have the next dates on here. We've already done that. We've done that.
I'm looking, yeah, I think it, check with the communication manager. I think we're good. She just wants to update the, the dates that passed.
I understand. So I don't know what's going on right now.
Oh, no, I just, because I was, happened to look at the communications manager to see if it could be done.
Okay.
And I was getting nodding, so rather than.
Okay.
Sorry, I was.
Solid. So we can go ahead and do that. Yeah, thank you.
I was wondering, I guess this is a question for a city administrator, city attorney. Can a board or commission take action to support a county, one of the county ballot initiatives on their own as a board, do an endorsement?
Could any of the advisory boards do that? Yes, they could.
Okay. Now that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a letter from ASRAAC, and this is in response to us asking what their needs were.
Oh, great. I was going to ask that anyways.
So I'm, I'm trying to get, wow, this doesn't take a lot. ASRAAC's really keen on moving forward and taking action on things. And I asked if the chair wanted to, how they wanted to respond to council's requests, and they wrote this letter in response to their needs. And I can, I'll give this to anyone in council who wants to see this. So this is, this is our ASRAAC's contribution to the question of, are your needs getting met as a commission?
Exactly.
So this is the letter. Dear Counselors, ASRAAC highly values the planning and decision-making that council does on behalf of the community. Thank you for your opportunity to reflect on the relationship between ASRAAC and city council. Our desire is to be more proactively involved in community-wide discussions involving sustainability issues. We ask that city council informs ASRAAC of upcoming projects and plans and allows for our input and feedback during early discussions. ASRAAC also asks to be proactively reached out to by other departments and boards in the city of Lafayette on projects that interconnect with sustainability. We also wish to be made aware of what our neighboring cities are working on with the possibility of collaboration. Our training and expertise relating to accessibility, adaptation to climate change, resource conservation, urban development, buildings, greenhouse gas emissions, transportation, energy, air quality, water, and waste reduction means that we can provide valuable feedback on a variety, oh, sorry, wide array of ordinances, policies, plans, processes, surveys, and other administrative discussions that affect the residents of Lafayette. The committee has planned a greater discussion in October and will provide detailed feedback in the upcoming months. Thank you for this opportunity to share. Elaine Munahan, ASRAAC Chair.
Right. Yeah, thank you for doing that. I was going to check in on that anyways, and I just took some notes down on some of their needs. So it's great. We can, we can definitely follow up with them as we figure out a right plan forward with them. And I'm, I'm assuming, you know, in January, when we do have like the official discussion with the majority of the boards, we can kind of hash out some of those details.
And I did have one other piece that I wanted to. All right, and I did have one other, um, piece that I wanted to share, and that was in regards to, ooh, I just deleted it.
Oh!
Swiped left, not right. Okay. Um, so, it's just a relationship, again, to the, um, capability of us growing through the activities that ASRAK is, is participating in, and I'll share the risks after I get that out of the trash.
Okay.
I think I did some trios here. Uh, but for Eco-Toberfest this weekend, I highly recommend, if you have a chance, to stop over there, and you'll see incredibly, I think, forward-looking, uh, event, collaboration between our cities, and, um, get an idea of the type of work that we can implement moving forward, and, uh, I'll be there at the, uh, I'll be there in a separate tent doing, uh, wizard activities. So, I'm bringing the Incar Wizards over, yeah, and we're going to, uh, just be talking about all kinds of things that happens when, uh, weather spins. So, come on over, it starts at two, two P.M., it goes until six P.M. It's in Community Park, and there are beer garden, two different bands, a...
Louisville?
In Louisville, Community Park in Louisville, yes. And there are places to park, designated places to park, you can see on our webpage where you can park and, and walk over, uh, EVs, there's also a, if you have bike parks, parts that you, um, bike materials and parts that you can share, they're, you use gently enough, you can take them and exchange them. The Halloween exchange is going, a Halloween costume exchange, so bring your Halloween costume pizza, parts and pieces, um, to share, uh, and electronics take back, I believe is what I was going to add. Is there anything?
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, and I think we're expecting, like, fifteen hundred people, so, potentially. Yep.
Yeah, go there.
Right, and I think that's it.
Awesome. Uh, for me, you, don't forget about the Lafayette Music Fest this Saturday as well.
Lafayette Music Fest.
That's all around, multiple locations, multiple bands, last year was, was amazing, and I think this year, hopefully, we can top that, um, so just be, uh, be, uh, hopefully we can all be present at that. Um, in addition to Counselor Barnes's comments in regards to ASRAK, and I know Counselor Walton didn't mention senior advisory board as well, did anyone else get a chance to check in on their boards, um, to see, you know, what their needs are, if they're interested in still being a board? Of course, that's the first question, and then beyond that, it's like, how to, do they want to have their, you know, annual meetings, workshops with us? Did anyone else get a chance to check in, or do you need more time?
We're, we're working, I was going to say, I'm working with LCAC and PUC on the co-direct now.
Co, okay.
Just going to help answer that.
Okay, well, we do need to have that discussion soon, so I, you know, just highly recommend council to have the discussions, uh, within the next, next meeting. Um, hopefully, if you have time, unless your board has already met, that way we can have a serious disc, uh, not necessarily a serious discussion, but, uh, figuring out which boards needs need to be addressed this year in 2023, and which can wait to after, after the retreat or during that time. Cool? All right, all right, well, I will, uh, read this into executive session. Uh, so, I moved to adjourn to executive session pursuant to caller revise statute sections twenty-four dash six, four oh two four B to confirm with the city for purposes of receiving legal advice on specifically regarding C R S, section thirty-eight dash twelve dash two one seven pertaining to resident cooperative's opportunity to purchase a mobile home park pursuant to C R S, section twenty-four dash six, four oh two four E one for the purposes of discharging because this is relative to management's needs, subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators with respect to loan agreement between the city and the, and a resident cooperative pertaining to the cooperative's potential acquisition of the mobile home park in the city of Lafayette. I have a second. Yeah, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The city council will adjourn to executive session, will not resume to the open meeting at ten oh two P.M. Thank you very much, have a good night.